And good afternoon. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, September 10, 2019. And I'm John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Gary Mensor, or Kerry Mensor.
That's close enough.
How do you like that?
We get along sometimes.
Gary Edwards, to my right, Commissioner Ty Mensor. And to his right, the clerk of the Board, Whitney Pierceall. To her right is the County Manager, Romero Chavez. And to his far right is Deputy Prosecuting Attorney Jane Fetterman. So with that, I'm going to turn to Commissioner Mensor to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
We're going to be having a Day of Remembrance proclamation regarding tomorrow's September 11th. And so in honor of that, I'd like to ask, in honor of the first responders who lost their lives that day, I'd like to ask one of our fire chiefs, President, Chief Wright is here? Chief Brooks, sorry, to lead us, if you would.
Please join me in the pledge of the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. And I look for an approval or a motion to approve the agenda for today.
I would so move.
It's been moved and seconded to approve today's agenda. Any discussion?
No, sir.
Nope. And we were having, I think we had one item removed. Did we get that removed? Or was that next week's?
Next week's.
Next week's? Good, okay. I remembered something. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have an agenda and approval for the board meeting minutes from August 27, 2019.
I would move to approve those board minutes. Second.
They've been moved and seconded. Any changes to the minutes?
No, sir.
Nope. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. That takes us to presentations. The first one is a proclamation for National Day of Service and Remembrance.
Thank you, Commissioners. I will ask Mr. Kurt Harden to come to the podium. He's our Management Services Director.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Romero. Today, we're going to have a proclamation to honor all the first responders. And this is in conjunction with 9/11. And so I'm going to talk for really brief, 30 seconds. And then I'll be followed by Chief Steve Brooks to talk for law enforcement. You're timing me, I saw that. Correction, not law enforcement, but fire service. And then Chief Pierceall to talk for law enforcement. But we all knew where we were on September 11, 2001, when the planes started crashing into buildings. I think everybody who's old enough to remember knows what they were doing that day. And I think for most of us, we were probably getting ready for work at 5:46 in the morning, Washington State time. But what we sometimes fail to realize is there were 2,977 people that were killed in those attacks. There were citizens of 78 countries who were part of those 2,977. There were 343 firefighters that lost their lives and 60 law enforcement. Because as people were evacuating the Twin Towers, our first responders were going in to help others, to help the victims. And so what we want to recognize, too, is that not just on 9/11, on September 11, that they do this, but every day, our first responders are out there, walking into situations, walking up and helping people, being dispatched by 911 Center T-Com. And they're walking into situations that take a lot of courage to go in and do their job. And sometimes, I know that we lose sight of that in our day-to-day lives, but I just want to make sure we honor that and honor their service that they have every day. So I'm going to be followed by Chief Steve Brooks and let him talk a little bit about the fire service and their contribution and role that we have.
Thank you, Kurt. Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak to you today. We'll be brief, but I just wanted to say, first of all, again, thank you for this opportunity to stand before you on behalf of the 11 Fire NMS agencies that serve Thurston County and really on behalf of the larger Fire NMS family. We do appreciate the opportunity to come together each year and remember. We've always tried to say that the slogan "We Will Never Forget" is more than that, but it really is an opportunity for us as a Fire NMS family to come together at this time of year and at others to honor the sacrifice that was made, not only by those who lost their lives on September 11, but their family members and the others who made sacrifice. But another particular group that I just want to draw particular attention to because it's been on my mind as of late, and you're seeing some more in the media about it, is those who have borne the long-lasting effects of the work that they did in the search and rescue efforts and the time since then. We're only now beginning to learn the long-term and lifelong effects that, working on that pile for those countless days, weeks, and months after the events of September 11, the impact and the toll that has taken on all of those who volunteered their time and their energy. And so as we pause during this period of remembrance, I would ask that we also remember them and their families and the impact that this continues to have. Thanks for that.
Thank you, Chief. Any comment? Oh, there we go. Come on up. Are you coming up? Are you going to address us, Chief?
Chief Dave Pierceall will address on behalf of law enforcement.
Good afternoon. So on behalf of Sheriff Snazza and the men and women of the Thurston County Sheriff's Office, I just want to also thank the Commission for recognizing today, our folks do, as Chief Brooks said, we run into harm's way all the time. And we really appreciate that we have a Commission that really values our service and citizens that also do. So I don't have a lot to add to what Chief Brooks, I think he said it very well, and what Mr. Harden did, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And so therefore, we ask you to issue that proclamation honoring our first responders for Remembrance Day.
Before I read that, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Thank you to all the first responders. You do a job that is extremely, extremely valuable and I respect and support this proclamation. Thank you for being here today.
Commissioner?
Ditto.
Last week, my family, we were in Kennewick, not vacationing, but they have a tribute or a memorial there in the park right off the highway. And they have a vertical, an external vertical support column that was erected and donated by the Iron Workers Local 14. And it is stunningly, eerily beautiful, if that makes sense. And I have a picture of my son explaining it to his two younger kids, explaining what happened and such. And when you just hold the wall, that iron beam, you just put your hand on it, you start thinking about it, it just gives you chills. It's pretty cool. If you haven't had a chance to see it, it's beautiful. Really is very pretty. So no, we will never forget. And we'll never forget where we were. And thank you all. Thank you all, first responders. So proclamation?
Are we ready for a proclamation?
Yes.
September 11, National Day of Service and Remembrance. Whereas on September 11, 2001, the American people endured the worst terrorist attack on U.S. soil in the nation's history with courage and heroism. And whereas in response to this tragedy, Americans across the country came together in a remarkable spirit of patriotism and unity and carried out countless acts of kindness, generosity, and compassion. And whereas community organizations and family members of the victims of the attack began observing the anniversary of September 11 as a charitable service day to honor the memory of those who were lost and those who united in response to the tragedy, including first responders and volunteers. And whereas the Serve America Act, approved by Congress and enacted into law on April 21, 2009, directed September 11 to be observed and recognized as an annual National Day of Service and Remembrance and charged the Corporation for National and Community Service with leading this nationwide effort. And whereas September 11, National Day of Service and Remembrance activities are being organized by a variety of nonprofits, faith-based, and community groups, public agencies, educational institutions, private businesses, and other organizations across the nation. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Thurston County Commissioners hereby proclaims September 11 as a Day of Service and Remembrance in Thurston County and calls upon the people of Thurston County to honor the lives of those lost through participation in community service and remembrance ceremonies on this day and throughout the year. Adopted this 10th day of September 2019, your Board of County Commissioners. And are we going to do a photo?
Typically, we applaud. I just don't think it's appropriate.
Well, it just.
You know, I just don't feel it.
It's.
Clapping for it.
It's so solemn. I mean, it is such a serious event. For those of you that were old enough to have, and I say, suffered through it, nothing like those that were on site, but for all of us, it was quite a drain.
So we have a presentation. Thank you.
I'd rather, I want to stand next to firemen. Well, I like you cops, too.
All right. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you again, first responders and everybody in attendance. That brings us to the point. Item number one on the agenda, which is the opportunity for the public to address the Board. And I'll go through some rules and explain how it's going to go, hopefully. This is the chance or the time where the public has the opportunity to address the Board. We don't engage in question, answer, debate, discussion. We just listen and we take notes. And if staff is going to do any follow-up, they'll follow up at a later date. So don't expect us to respond. And if you did expect us to respond and we don't, it's not because we're being evasive and rude. Speakers are limited to three minutes. And Whitney Pierceall has the timer here. Timer's up on the Board, and your time ticks down to zero, and you'll hear a chime. That means your time is up. If you are mid-sentence, go ahead and finish your thought, but please don't take advantage of it and go on another one, two, or three minutes. They'll have to gather you out. Or I get to. I haven't done that yet. Attendees or people speaking are not allowed to donate their time to another person. The Board reserves the right to restrict a person's opportunity to address the meeting for a good cause. If you haven't already, please silence your phones. No comments that are lewd or offensive to a reasonable person, please be respectful. No outbursts of any kind. No comments that are commercial in nature, such as a promotion for a for-profit business. No comments that are inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory. And any and all materials that are provided to the county may be considered public records subject to public release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter 42.56 of the RCW. of the RCW. And any remarks about pending land use permits or similar matters that could eventually come before the Board on appeal wouldn't be appropriate either. So I will call your name, and when you come to the podium, please introduce yourself and about where you live in the county, and then be cognizant of the time. I'll call your name, then I will call the next person that has signed up on the list. So you're on the standby, ready to go. And the sign up sheet's in the back. If you haven't signed up, please do so. And when I exhaust this list, I'll give you an opportunity to address the Board regardless. So first up is John Pettit, followed by Terry Ballard.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is John Pettit. I live in the East Olympia area. As I've been considering in providing different pieces of information to the county, and for the record, yes, I obviously am opposed to the current courthouse proposal as it stands, I recently provided you a five-item list, a reasoned list, why the proposition should not go forward. And it's pretty clear, and from what I've heard and seen online already, a little executive session, we want to re-categorize certain things that may have occurred in order to try to fit a line of events that might fall within some boundaries of law. I thought perhaps I might remind a couple of the Commissioners who actually voted for the thing, a certain thing that they both participated in, was an oath of office, oath of elected office. I, Ty Menzer, John Hutchings, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington. And I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the office Thurston County Commissioner according to the law to the best of my ability. I wanted to remind you, because clearly, somewhere in the last nine months from Mr. Menzer and the last couple of years from Mr. Hutchings, we've lost track that you also have to follow county code. You have a very, very specific county code referring to how decisions are made and when with public meetings. You know, the only place you guys are authorized to have a meeting? It's right here, this room. Your county code doesn't provide for any exception to that. So therefore, any decisions made outside of this room are actually null and void. You violated county code. Now, I know you want to explain it away that you guys don't have to follow the code. I guess that's what we're saying. I'm going to encourage you to understand that while clearly, this probably is not the end of the road, I'm going to continue to collect information. I think it's a little sad that the citizens have to fight with the Commissioners to follow the law and the code for the county. In fact, it'd be my opinion, if you don't want to follow the state law, if you don't want to follow the county code, it's okay, you can put in a resignation. You can say, "I don't want to follow the laws, therefore, I'm not really seeking to continue to be a Commissioner." The other alternative, if you don't do things enough, is that people have to go through the process of removing people through recall action. And not following the law is malfeasance. Give it some thought, please reconsider, and reevaluate your decision about the proposal for the courthouse.
Next is Terry Ballard, followed by Sharon Kuntz.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Terry Ballard. I'm a 35-year Army veteran, retired in 2012, born in Washington State and reside in Tangawea. I'm here to talk about the Armor Bear Cat vehicle that's on the block to be approved. I'm totally for it. I was totally against the MRAP being used for something like this, but I'm totally for it, but I have to, I have some concerns, administrative concerns, logistics concerns, and training concerns, and of course, my expertise is maintenance. The model that they want with options is going to cost $301,000. The basic model is about $200,000 without options. Now, there is a plan in there on the website for $139,551 for the Armor Bear Cat Life Cycle Maintenance Program. I'd like to know what the length of service of that is and any additional items, like all the options that they want. What does it cover? How long does it cover? And what will be the cost of that coverage that they'll have to include in their budget, which should be already known? And if they don't choose the maintenance program, the cost of training to maintain those personnel with the factory is a cost. The cost of maintaining the MRAP was $27,000. And what is, what will be that reoccurring cost? Operator training and refresher training, factory training, train the trainer, okay? Have these things been considered? Because we have a water cannon that can actually kill someone, okay? I know you guys are all into the, you know, escape hatch and all that, but I'm concerned on the items that might cause physical harm and the proper training of that, and refresher training for that, okay? The usage of it. What is the required mileage? We don't want this thing to sit, because the longer it sits, the more the seals break, the more maintenance it's going to cause. Unlike your, unlike their communications van, it sits. They're using some of that money that they never use for maintenance over here, so is this going to sit there, too? The usage and operation of the SWAT team with the SWAT, they need to know the response time, they need to be out there training with it, to include the communication van, which is already low usage. Okay? And I find it very interesting that I have two law enforcement officers on the Board, okay? And one mentioned that it's not his decision, therefore, he doesn't have any insight, doesn't have, doesn't want to share his experience. Well, I'm sharing, I'm sharing my experience right here, okay? And my experience is 38 years in the military and 28 years in ground equipment readiness. And I handled a third of Iraq. I was the ground equipment readiness division for ICor and Fort Lewis, NCYC. And I have a lot of experience, and so does a member of your staff that just got hired as a maintenance officer directly from the Army. He's totally trained in operation. He's totally trained in maintenance procedures, usage, all this, if his resume is correct, okay? And I urge you to make sure that all the logistics, admin, everything involved, the maintenance and everything else, is pretty well set, so you can woefully use the power of the purse. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Next is Sharon Kuntz, followed by Kiriyaki Drer, I believe. Did I get it right?
Yes. Thank you. That's better than I did the first time. Hi, Commissioners. Sharon Kuntz, Friends of Rocky Prairie. I'm frustrated that some of you have decided not to speak with those of us who are arguing against the North Point Comprehensive Plan Amendment request. That request would put Miller-Sylvania State Park, South County, at risk from a proposed massive industrial center with its huge increase in traffic, pollution, noise, et cetera. You've been lobbied by North Point representatives for many months before we even knew about this, and we've, and you've only been getting the information they have wanted you to have. I had one half-hour appointment with each of you, and that was it. And I don't think it's a very fair way to make a decision that is such as important, so important as this, hearing mainly from just one side. Furthermore, I've now had to tell people who've spent their time writing to you that those letters aren't being seen by you for the most part, but because they're being sent to Ian, who's a staff member who sort of tallies up pros and cons. That may not be true of all of them, but some of the true communications are not getting to you, and people are upset to learn that. I point out, you'll read them later, but that's not great comfort to some of them who want to be able to communicate with you right now. Another alarming point, the North Point representative, not Steve, but one from Seattle, stood up at a recent Port of Tacoma meeting and announced, "We've been told we'll be on the 2021 docket." Who's been assuring him of that, I'd like to know, because it's worrisome, since you've only voted to consider it, as far as I can recall. Now I have roughly one and a half minutes left to tell you all the things that I'd like to tell you, and of course, that's impossible. So I'm not going to try. I'm going to ask you, I'm going to point out it's not just me, and ask you, have you asked Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife for an analysis of why the Maytown site is so valuable? Have you talked to park people or investigated Miller-Sylvania State Park and the effect that noise and lights 24/7, trains and trucks coupling, uncoupling, passing by virtually next door to the park? What's the effect on the park experience with that? What happens to the more than $11 million, excuse me, that they contribute to the local economy when that park experience deteriorates so that they don't get their 500,000 visitors anymore? Pardon me. Have you met with any hydrologists to discuss what would happen to nearby wells, the salmon, this critical aquifer of the Chehleus Basin where there's six to nine million square feet of warehouse and cargo transfer center there? And in fact, a deep lake, the lake that Miller-Sylvania State Park sits on, that's one of the places where the water drains, so if there are any spills, it goes right there in super-fast travel time. That's just a partial list of the information you need to, that you need in order to make an informed decision. And you have to have it in advance, because these things take a lot of study. It's a dense, serious issue. I've had Commissioners tell me that you've been threatened with a lawsuit if you don't put this on the docket. I hope you've been told that's an empty threat. Zoning is completely under your purview. It's your right. Otherwise, you'd be sued all the time. How many requests do you turn down for comp plan amendments? I'd write you more information, but it'd just go to Dan. So please make this right. Give me 20 more seconds here, sorry. Talk to concerned citizens about this issue. Read their letters. Maybe set up town halls, town halls for us, so we can come in and talk. We'd be happy to have you on a tour of the area, and we'd, we'd let people, we'd get the experts on there for you, you know? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kiriyaki, and then followed by Doreen, I believe, Millward.
I'd like to introduce, Kiriyaki is one of those people who I asked to come here because her letter might not be read otherwise. She's very nervous and has asked me to stand by to read her letter for her if she can't do it.
Thanks, Sharon.
Hello, and good afternoon. My name is Kiriyaki Drer, and I am a resident of the Rocky Prairie area. I'd like to address the issue of building an industrial park in our little slice of heaven. I will not be speaking on the horrendous environmental impact it will have on our community. You have paid experts for that. Rather, I intend on getting a little more personal. I'm a wife and a mother to two beautiful, strong, resilient children. My nine-year-old daughter and 11-year-old son know not where they come from and have no roots to speak of. For the first eight years of my sons and the first six years of my daughter's lives, they were shuffled around at the behest of the United States Army. Not only were they constantly having to adapt to new places, they were also adapting to new people, all the while having to regularly see their daddy off to wherever our country needed him. Three years ago this November, after 16 years of total service, 12 of those active, my amazing and better half was medically discharged from our armed forces. This huge shakeup in our lives brought both sadness and relief. The sadness came from a place of love and respect for our country and military family, the relief from knowing that our kids and I would no longer have to shed tears over not knowing the ifs and whens of the military life. My husband and I decided that November, in November of 2016, that we had to start planning some well-deserved roots for our children. Those roots started growing when we were finally able to buy our first home two years ago in this beautiful area that is being threatened. Now with the industrial park installation looming over us, it sure feels like the government is threatening to take from our properties, even more than just restrictions that have been put in place just for the chance that there might be pocket gophers on our property. We, along with those in our community, did not purchase our homes just to have our officials take away everything we love about the area by way of causing excess traffic, multiple types of pollution, and downright disturbing our peaceful way of life. I heard that you, Commissioners, are opposed to taking from your constituents, but that is exactly what you will be doing if you allow this monstrous industrial center to happen. You will help ruin our beautiful, peaceful country neighborhood, and we will end up having to, our, sorry, to uproot our family once again. That is not what we deserve, so I implore you all to do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Doreen.
My name is Doreen Millward. I live at 1252...
Just a moment here, I'll give you, there you go.
Okay. Doreen Millward at 12525 Case Road Southwest. And I'm here to speak about an operation called Faith Harvest Helpers, which is located at like 126 something, 12643 Case Road Southwest. It was the subject of a front-page news article last week's Olympian, and it had been scheduled for a hearing before the hearing examiner, but they, after this bad staff report, they canceled the hearing. So us neighbors that were prepared to explain and testify about this project can't do so. And I fear that it's a lack of enforcement issue. When I went to prepare for the hearing, I was astounded that meticulously, three years of documentation of land use violations, environmental violations on this property have been ongoing, and not a single diminish of their operations has happened despite notices of violation for burying fish carcasses, which is my main concern, and I talk about, which wasn't in the news article, is they are canning fish for poor people, which sounds great, but they have no public health or any permitting or any oversight at all for what they're doing. So it would be a tragedy if something bad should happen to the fish and injure poor people, and then have it be cycled back to determine that it was Thurston County who didn't enforce their code regulations. Like I said, this, there was a submittal from Dawn Peoples to the hearing examiner, it was in the staff report, and she confirmed they have no health, any, anything to do what they're doing. And so everyone has shallow wells, they bury their fish guts, they've been told more than twice not to do that. They have a backhoe that digs deep holes to bury them. I think the quantities that are going to be huge, so it's a big issue. They built two new pole buildings, which according to county code, all violations are supposed to be corrected before any permits are issued. They have built, the buildings are almost complete. They're, one is, according to Faith Harvest Helpers' website, is supposed to be for a warehouse for this fish canning, and the other building is supposed to be for the fish canning. They are envisioning a huge operation that has absolutely no land use or public health or environmental oversight to it. Those are just some of my concerns, and I actually had prepared excerpts from, from different documents that I found on the county and was going to give it to the hearing examiner for a hearing that didn't happen. And I happen to have three copies of it, if you want that. It is in the hearing examiner record, but I don't know when we're going to have a hearing on that. So I'm at the end.
Perfect, Doreen. Thank you. If you don't mind supplying that over here to the county manager, he'll make sure that we get copies of that. Thank you. That exhausts the list of people that have signed up. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the Board of County Commissioners that has not spoken yet? No, okay. Thank you. That takes us to number two on the agenda, which is the county manager's update.
Thank you, Commissioners. Just a couple of items. Following up on Mr. Pettit's testimony today, he in fact submitted a letter dated September 5th with the five items that he alluded to in his testimony today. We will be responding to the items he highlighted on this letter as soon as feasible, so that response is coming up. The next item that I'd like to highlight is a piece of great news. But let me take you back to, back in 2016, when the Board of County Commissioners approved a $2 million from the real estate excise tax to, to address fish barrier passage in the county. And that was just the beginning of a program that has been extremely successful. And since, the Board of County Commissioners have continued to support this program with a $2 million on a yearly basis from the real estate excise tax, too. Last year, we finished five locations where we opened fish habitat that included close to seven miles of habitat as a result of that. So this innovative program, it makes a little bit of a difference, and it's not related to any transportation projects. On a normal basis, when a jurisdiction needs to address a transportation project and they just find a fish barrier, it becomes somewhat of a second thought as to how jurisdictions need to address fish barriers as they do their business. This program is a little bit different. We have taken the approach... We have taken the approach of shifting the mindset and strategically starting eliminating the barriers here in the county to provide fish habitat without having a transportation project be part of the solution. That innovation has captured the attention of the American Public Works Association. Early this year, this project won the Project of the Year Award for Washington State, and we were able to attend, Commissioner Hutchins and myself attended the ceremony in Tacoma, receiving the state award. Last night, the National American Public Works Association conducted their award ceremony at a national level, where Commissioner Mensah and myself had the opportunity to attend and receive the national award for this project. And perhaps this is not the end of it. I believe that we're going to be receiving an international award later in this year. And from my point of view, this reflects the commitment from the elected officials here and the commitment from staff to make this program extremely successful. And at the end, it's not about the accolade. At the end, it's about providing to the environment what we need to do in providing and expanding fish habitat, as we shall do. So with that in mind, this is a beautiful plaque that we received last night. Congratulations to you and congratulations to Public Works.
Yes, are they here? Oh, they're there, yeah. A couple of them. Questions or comments?
Just congratulations to the, we had a, with the national convention being in Seattle, we had a great contingent of folks that were able to be there, which was really cool. And so it was great to be able to share that with them. And in order to further highlight that, we do our Thurston County Connections, and so I'm going to be working with Steve and some of the other staff to highlight some of the aspects of this program in my next segment of Thurston County Connections, which we're taping on Friday.
Excellent.
More to come.
Yeah, state, national, and potentially international. The fish passage removal, barrier removal is awesome. And again, I've said this before, but it's really heartwarming to see the Native American and our partners when we have these dedication ribbon cuttings and they're seeing salmon come back that haven't been there in 50 years. That's pretty doggone.
That's correct.
Thank you, sir. Do you have further?
Nope, that's all I have for you, commissioners.
Takes us to item number three on the agenda, the consent items A through I.
I have moved to approve consent items A through I. Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept consent items A through I. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, that carries. Number four on the agenda is department items for moving to the sheriff's office, per purchase of an armored protective vehicle. Chief Pierceall, thank you.
Good afternoon again, commissioners. Dave Pierceall, Thurston County Sheriff's Office. What we're looking for is your approval to purchase a armored vehicle. It's called a Bearcat. It's from Lenko Company back east. And unfortunately, we live in a time where we need to have an armored vehicle with us for those types of operations, SWAT operations or something for tactical, so that we can get our people into a place safely and so that we can also rescue people safely if we need to. We'll be able to get it close enough to a scene where our officers are able to deploy, get in and do whatever needs to be done. It's also, will help us with negotiating because it'll get us close to the scene. We can negotiate with somebody over the PA system. But it's just, it's a thing for officer safety that we need to have, so that's what we're asking for at this point.
Any questions?
Yeah, so just as a little bit of a background, chief, appreciate you being here to answer a few questions. The original proposal to the commissioners came last spring and because you guys were asking for permission to seek a grant.
Correct.
And so it wasn't you, I know, but it was one of your, one of your colleagues who was answering questions, and I asked a bunch of questions because I didn't know we had such a vehicle. So I had a bunch of questions about why do we need this? How is it used? How many times does it go out? So we'd already kind of gone through that, and then when you came back last week, it was about the fact that the grant hadn't come through, so you had a restructured financing plan.
Correct.
Hopefully not touching the general fund for the most part. So the questions from the board were focused on the financing because that was kind of the new thing you were bringing forward. But in the meantime, the public, the purchase was kind of got out into the internet or social media or whatever, and so I got a lot of questions. I think my seatmates did as well. Kind of circling back to the questions that I had last spring about, you know, why does, why do we have this? What do we, what do we use it for? How could it be used appropriately or inappropriately? So in light of that, so folks know a little bit more about this, one thing I wanted to ask, so we have a, we have a current armored vehicle. Is that correct?
Yes, we have a current armored vehicle. It's called an MRAP. It was a federal surplus that we got about five years ago. It's not ideal for what we, what we need. We need something that's a little bit easier to get in and out of as far as into a situation. The MRAP is a big vehicle. It's top-heavy, it's a very heavy vehicle. The Bearcat is on a standard, I think it's an F-450 or 550 frame, so it's an actual Ford. It's got the Ford engine, Ford frame, Ford everything. It's just got the armor on top of it, so it's, it'll be something that's more maneuverable, easier to get into. The problem with the MRAP that we're having is we're, we're not able to find parts for it. Our shop people have scoured everywhere they can, gone to the military, gone everywhere, and just to find parts, we're having a very difficult time with it. So to keep it operational is just not, not a great idea. We've dumped about $27,000 into it so far with, with parts and labor, and I'm being told now that it looks like the transmission may be going out, and that's just another huge thing, that it's just not a great vehicle for us.
So is the new vehicle going to take over and replace the old vehicle, or are you still going to find uses for both?
No, we're going to, we're going to eliminate the MRAP, whether it's give it to another law enforcement agency or back to the military, but the Bearcat would become the one armored vehicle that we'd use for the SWAT team.
You answered one of my questions, which is going to be how long you'd owned the MRAP. You said about five years.
Yes.
And then about how many times does that get used?
We have roughly nine to 12 SWAT calls per year that it would go out on. That's been our average. We have training 18 times a year, so our SWAT team would take the MRAP out or whatever vehicle we have and does the training with it. But actual missions, it's about nine to 12.
And can you explain for folks kind of what the typical, I'm sure there's different situations, but what's a typical type of call that you'd call this thing out for?
It would go out with our SWAT team on barricaded subjects where we have somebody inside of a place that we can't get out, that we can't get them to communicate with us. It would go out on any tactical, high-level tactical operation that we would have with the SWAT team would be needed to, to come in. We would use that, and it would be a place for cover for our people, and it would be a place of helping us to grab people, to rescue them out of there if we needed to.
I think the overwhelming number of emails and calls I got were, were really about concern that this vehicle would be used like against pro, civil protesters, or I think it might have been confusion about the fact that a port security grant was sought, so maybe it made people, maybe, I'm just guessing.
Sure.
Maybe it made citizens think of the port protests and sort of envisioning this vehicle in that situation and them feeling that that wasn't appropriate. Would it ever be used in that kind of a?
It is going to be used if our SWAT team is called out and in need of a, a high-level tactical situation. Protest is not something that we would normally have the Bearcat at, no.
Has it ever been used, the MRAP?
No, we've never taken the MRAP.
Okay, in the five years that you've had?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Are there, last question. Like, are there, like Mr. Ballard mentioned the water cannons, and some, a couple of citizens mentioned that. Are there capabilities that this vehicle has? You said it's smaller. Does it have certain capabilities that the other one didn't? I mean, are there, I'm not sure what capacities are.
This does not have a water cannon on it. That's not a feature that we ordered on it. It's, the biggest thing that it is, it provides armored protection for us if we're being shot at. I've been on situations where we have had, I was down in Hoquim a few years ago where we were with a barricaded subject inside and he was shooting at the police, and fortunately we had the state patrol Bearcat, and so they were able to, you know, not, not be injured. So, but yeah, we don't have a water cannon on it. It's got very basic features, and it's the armored protection that we're looking for, and the maneuverability of it being on a, a Ford frame just to, to get around where we need to easier.
There's been mention of the escape hatch. What is that about? Like underneath, you can pull people in or something?
That would be for rescuing. If you, if we had to rescue an officer down or a citizen, if we had to, we could get over top and pull them up.
Okay, thanks, chief. Those are my questions.
Commissioner?
I think I just want to take this opportunity. I too have received some of that critical correspondence, I guess, but unfortunately, our world is changing, and I would like those folks that are concerned about this expenditure to think about if their son or their daughter was a police officer involved in one of these very tragic situations. And when I talk about our world is changing, just within the year, we could have had a very serious, one of these mass shootings they talk about. But an armed citizen over in Tumwater intervened in that situation at Walmart and solved the problem before law enforcement ever had to get involved. But could you imagine having to respond to one of these mass shooting scenarios and not have the right equipment to protect our officers? So that's kind of where I'm coming from. I, I know it's a lot of money, but I think it's money well spent, and just please make that consideration part of your thought process, that if you had a loved one that was going to be performing this duty in which they sometimes sacrifice all, that they shouldn't have the best equipment. And especially today, on our recognition of the 9/11 incident. And that kind of changed the world, and it's just something we have to deal with, so I'm all for it.
Thank you, chief, as well. And as Mr. Ballard said, we rely on our training and our background, our experiences, and I've been on two SWAT teams in two different states that didn't have the luxury. I don't say it's luxury. Now it's, it's not a luxury, it's a necessity. But back in the 80s, prior to 911, 2011, 911 and 2001, it was more of a protective thing, but now it's a necessity. And so I will always vote on the side of safety and save all of our first responders, whether it be law enforcement or medic personnel or firefighters and citizens, which means victims or witnesses at a major active scene in extricating them and protecting them. And I've received a considerable email and one that said, if you, if you vote for this, I won't vote for you. Okay. But I'm going to vote in good conscience for this vehicle, for safety, for law enforcement and the citizens.
Appreciate it.
Anything further?
Just, you know, those, by way of comment, I considered the citizens' input very carefully. I think there were some interesting points made, and I thought about it very carefully. What's important to me is, you know, a few things. This is a replacement of a, an upgrade to a vehicle that the sheriff's office has already had, and in five years, it really hasn't been used in the inappropriate way that the folks are concerned about. So that speaks something to me about those fears. Financially, I'm very concerned about our financial health in the county, and so the fact that the sheriffs have put together a financing plan that does not put this burden on the general fund, because that was something raised by several citizens, you know, the county general fund shouldn't be supporting this if they thought that it wasn't a good tool. But it's, and the financial impact is important, but they've come up with a good plan that uses other resources and reallocates them in a way that I think creates a better tool with some tools that you weren't as, you know, as using as easily. And then finally, kind of echoing some of the things that my seatmate said, this is supporting our multi-jurisdictional SWAT team. The escape hatch element I've highlighted before, I mean, I could see how that could really save the life of a first responder that was down in a situation where there wouldn't be a way to get to them otherwise. There's no reason for me to believe, sitting here right now, this is going to be used in an inappropriate circumstance, so I support the sheriff's acquisition under these circumstances.
I would move to authorize the sheriff to purchase an armored protective vehicle with an estimated cost of $301,000. Approve a resolution allowing the purchase through the United States General Services Administration and authorize the fleet manager to sign the agreement to purchase the vehicle and any forthcoming changes that do not amend the funding or duration of the agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to purchase this vehicle. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much.
Number five is Public Works setting a public hearing. You're not Tim.
I mean, it can be.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Zamna Jati with Public Works. I'm here to request that the board set a public hearing to accept public comments on proposed changes to Thurston County Code, Chapter 1520. Back in June 2019, the board requested that staff look at what changes would be required to Thurston County Code to increase the apprenticeship requirements for Public Works projects from 10% to 15%. Public Works projects are defined as county construction projects, which are estimated to cost $1 million or more. Staff have completed review of the Thurston County Code and proposed changes, which have been reviewed and approved by the prosecuting attorney. We are requesting that the board set a public hearing date for October 1st, 2019, to hear public comments on the proposed changes.
Questions or comments?
No, sir.
Questions or comments?
I'm excited to see this move forward, so I don't have any further comment.
Okay, nor do I.
I would move to set a public hearing for Tuesday, October 1st, 2019, at 3:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard at the Thurston County Courthouse, Room 280, Building 1, 2000 Lakewood Drive, Southwest Olympia, Washington, to accept and consider public comments on proposed changes to the Thurston County Code, Chapter 15.20, apprentice requirements for Public Works projects.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to set this public hearing. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you. Item number six, Community Planning and Economic Development, another public hearing. Chris, 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 Chris.
Afternoon. Christina Chapeau with Community Planning, senior planner. I'm here to request a public hearing for the October 7th, 2019, at 5:30 PM or soon thereafter to take testimony on the 2020-2025 Capital Improvement Program. This actually amends Appendix G of the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan. This program identifies the county's six-year financing and implementation strategy for capital projects needed to keep pace with the population growth and to maintain the defined level of service standards. Planning Commission has held a workshop on July 9th, excuse me, on June 9th to review and discuss the amendment and held a public hearing on July 24th. August 27th, the board has, did hold a briefing on this subject. The draft document is available for public review on the Community Planning's website, and the hearing will be duly noticed in the Olympian.
Any questions or comments?
No, sir.
No.
Nor do I.
This has been discussed well ahead of time for the viewing public, I'll point out. I would move to set a public hearing for October 7th, 2019, at 5:30 PM at the Thurston County Courthouse, Building 1, in Room 280, to receive public comment on the annual update to the Appendix G of the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan, the 2020-2025 Capital Improvement Program.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to set the public hearing. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Nope. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, Chris. Number seven, Public Health and Social Services, the 2020 Point and Time Count Request for Qualifications and Quotes. Tom Webster, welcome, Tom.
Good afternoon. Tom Webster, Public Health and Social Services. We're here to request that you approve Public Health and Social Services to issue a request for qualifications and quotes to procure contractors to support the 2020 Point and Time Homeless Census Count. The Homeless Housing and Assistance Act requires that each county in Washington conduct an annual point and time count of sheltered and unsheltered persons experiencing homelessness. The census is conducted in accordance with the requirements of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and the 2020 Point and Time Count will occur on January 23rd, 2020. Earlier this year, on May 21st, you approved $25,000 to be allocated for the point and time count, so this action is allowing us to go out and procure a contractor to assist us in conducting this activity. So anyway, sorry. So this contract will support county strategic. So this contract will support county strategic plan initiative three, collaboration with communities' partners to reduce homelessness and implement Thurston Thrives housing strategies.
Questions or comments?
Well, again, we've discussed this quite a bit, so no more questions.
Olympia has been conducting this in years past.
The last two years, the City of Olympia has conducted this for us. We've contracted with the City of Olympia. They are unable to do so this year, so we're seeking a contractor to support us.
Who did it before Olympia?
Before that, it was the county's contractor homeless coordinator, Aaron Rodriguez, was involved in conducting it, three, four years ago.
Okay. Hey.
Ready to go?
Yes, sir.
I would move to approve issuing a request for qualifications and quotes to produce, to procure a contractor to support the 2020 Point in Time Homeless Census Count by the Thurston County Public Health and Social Services Department.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the RFQ, or Request for Qualifications. Any further comment or discussion?
No, sir.
Nope. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was 7A. Now, 7B is approve the CPAA, the Cascade Pacific Action Alliance Contract Agreement. Liz Davis.
Hello. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Liz Davis, Director of Child, Family, and Community Wellness at Thurston County Public Health and Social Services. This contract amendment will continue our funding from the Cascade Pacific Action Alliance for an additional year. The amended contract amount for 2020 will be $203,820, and will enable Public Health and Social Services to implement three regional projects in opioid response, one, reproductive maternal and child health, which is two, and chronic disease prevention and control. The Healthier Washington Medicaid Transformation is a five-year agreement that provides up to $1.5 billion in federal funds to account for regional health transformation projects that benefit people who are eligible for and then enrolled in Medicare. The initiative provides incentives for providers, like us, who are committed to changing how we deliver care. And each region has what's called an accountable community of health. We have nine of them in the state, and that's been established by the healthcare authority, and ours is called the Cascade Pacific Action Alliance. So we are in a region with Cowlets County, Grace Harbor County, Lewis, Mason, Pacific, and Wackayacum Counties. In November 2017, we, as a county, were selected to provide those three projects that we spoke about before, and this funding will simply enable us to continue to do good work on those projects. More money.
Anything?
Good stuff. Thank you.
Anything?
Nope. Went over this one, too. Thank you.
Yep.
Motion?
I would move to approve Amendment Number DY2 to the Cascade Pacific Action Alliance Medicaid Transformation Project, Contract Number K229347, for a revised 2020 contract amount of $203,820, and authorize the Thurston County Public Health and Social Services Director to sign the amendment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the CPAA contract amendment. Further discussion?
No, sir.
Nope. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
7C, approve the Thurston County Chamber Foundation Thurston Thrives contract.
Hey, it's me again. In the 2019 budget, the board authorized Public Health and Social Services to invest $40,000 in Thurston Thrives, which is our community's public-private health initiative. In early 2013, Thurston Thrives was founded by the Board of Health at that time as a means of improving our county health rankings. When Thurston Thrives was initially founded, our county only ranked 14th out of 39 states in Washington, which is ranked in the 64th percentile, so not great. But now, in 2019, we're ranked fifth in the state, which is a 36% improvement in only six years. Thurston Thrives is specifically called out in the Thurston County Strategic Plan as a method of continuing to improve health in our community. Through Thurston Thrives, hundreds of community members have come together around issues that include clinical and emergency care, community design, the economy, environment, food, housing, public safety and justice, and also the Partners for Children, Youth, and Families, which includes education and early learning, and which Commissioner Hutchings chairs. And then also, it's overseen by a public-private, or sorry, by a coordinating council, which is public-private, it's cross-sector, on which Commissioner Mensah serves. In December 2014, Thurston Thrives was transitioned into a public-private partnership rather than a county-led initiative. The Board of Health and participating partners at that time selected the Thurston County Chamber Foundation to serve as the backbone organization for Thurston Thrives, and also the fiscal agent for the initiative. And the foundation has served admirably in that capacity over the past five years. Community funding partners now have been expanded in addition to the county, United Way, the Chamber, and the Chamber Foundation, Wells Fargo, Kaiser Permanente, and the Cascade Pacific Action Alliance, which you just heard about, and others. So the county's initial contract was written to provide seed money for Thurston Thrives, but also required a dollar-for-dollar match in order to help things get up and going. But now that things are rolling, it's very cumbersome to both the foundation and to county staff to have to account for that on every single invoice. So this sole-source contract will ensure that the deliverables are met, that we want to see met, but also frees up time on behalf of Chamber Foundation staff and also county staff to do more good work.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments?
I asked at the earlier briefing whether you felt that the changes would still provide the appropriate level of accountability and oversight, and you felt confident, so...
Yes.
Based on that, I'm okay supporting that.
Yeah.
I see we have our chamber president in attendance. Is he part of this presentation?
Yes, we do.
Yes. If you pass this motion, I'd like to invite David Chafford to say a couple of words.
Yes, please. Please bring Dave Chafford forward.
All right. Apparently, they want to talk to you now, David. So not only president of the Thurston County Chamber, but also of the Chamber Foundation, which is an important distinction.
Thank you, Commissioners. So mentally, I admire remarks prepared for successful completion of your work, so I'm going to just assume that that will be the case, so forgive a little bit of the presumptuous in my comments, but thank you. One for your continued support of the foundation and its role as Thurston Thrives' backbone organization. It's important to recognize that collective impact initiatives don't happen without backbone organizations providing the support for the endeavor. You as public health, in charge of public health and the policies of public health, know how difficult it is to impact health across a community such as Thurston County. It is never enough resources, and there's never enough opportunities to curve or support the ability for people to live healthier and more positive lives. Thurston Thrives, over the last few years, has helped develop a platform and a mechanism by which you, as policymakers, and other community members as policymakers, can utilize and support all of those that are engaged in public health throughout our community. And so I commend you for it. One of the nuances that Liz mentioned, it was an interesting contract that we did have in trying to create a match dollar-for-dollar, and so we stepped up, and our board committed to Thurston Thrives, and still is committed to Thurston Thrives, both my boards, in providing financial support and other resource support for the backbone organization. One of the unique things that is said is develop resources. So we develop resources for the backbone organization that Liz pointed out, which is now two-thirds private sector in total dollar amounts. And that's not where it started, and that's where it is currently. We'd like to see it more of a 50-50 split of private sector and government commitment. And so for you, thank you very much for your commitment. And to your colleagues in other municipalities and jurisdictions, we are eagerly looking forward to the time when we can say that everyone is engaged at similar levels. Happy to answer any questions from the backbone organization's perspective, if you'd like me to.
The backbone organization, who might your backbone be as well here that's in attendance?
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate the prompt. The program coordinator for the backbone organization is Crosby Carter.
Thank you.
Crosby's doing just a phenomenal job, especially on leveraging how we look at resource development. It's been phenomenal, so.
I would agree with that. Question or comments?
I don't think so. Nope. We've been through this one, too.
Now, go down and sit and wait for your decision.
Well, don't sit down now. We're going to do something here pretty quick, aren't we?
Yes, sir, right now.
I would move to approve the Thurston County Chamber Foundation Sole Source Services contract for the maximum compensation amount of $40,000 to serve as the backbone organization for Thurston Thrives, and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to sign this contract.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Chamber Foundation Thurston Thrives contract. Further discussion now? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Agenda item number six, Central Services Bid Award for a Project Over HVAC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here today to ask you to award bid to lowest bidder on project, which is the Building Three HVAC Improvement Project, which includes rooftop unit and three feet perimeter of roofing around the unit. The lowest bidder was of $533,000, $533,000 and $931. And this bid was by 120,000 less than the next bidder. So with this bid, we're asking you to approve and award this contract to J.A. Morris Construction of Olympia.
In case I missed it, introduce yourself, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
My name is Marius Kowalewski. I am a Capital Project Manager II with Central Services, and I'm working for Thurston County for the last 20 years.
Wow, 20 years. Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments about this?
No. I think we went over this one, too.
Yeah, it's something that we have to do to make sure we're keeping up with our buildings.
Yep. All right, then. Motion, please.
I would move to award a contract not to exceed $533,902.31, not including Washington State sales tax or 10% contingency, for the Thurston County Building Three Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning HVAC Improvement Project, Number 25561, to J.A. Morris Construction of Olympia, Washington, and authorize the Thurston County Board of Commissioners to sign the contract, and for the Assistant County Manager to approve any change orders due to unforeseen conditions only, not for changes in scope that do not exceed the 10% contingency.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to bid the award for the HVAC in Building Number Three. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
I might add, Building Three is the sheriff's office and district court.
District Court and sheriff's office. This is the largest building on our courthouse campus.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yep. Now, we move to item number nine, County Manager setting a public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioners. And this relates to the midterm budget adjustment, and you made preliminary decisions a couple of weeks ago. So the next step is to hold a public hearing. Under RCW 36.40.07, the Board of County Commissioners is required to hold a public hearing on the first Monday in October to hear public testimony related to the preliminary Thurston County 2019 midterm adjustments for the biennial budgets, operating and capital budgets, including the biennial budgets for 2019, 2020. The purpose of the public hearing that you may be considering setting for October 7th, 2019, at 5:30 in the afternoon, is for you to hear public testimony on the county's preliminary 2019 midterm budget adjustment. The preliminary budget will be published online no later than September 23rd, 2019, and it will be available to the public, both in public notices as well as online and print. Will be published that online, and upon request, will make available via paper copy, whomever wants to see the budget proposal. Also, the requirement under RCW 3640070, elected officials as well as department directors need to be available on Monday, October 7th, 2019, at 5:30, to answer any questions on behalf of the board that perhaps the taxpayers or the citizens may have related to the particulars of the budget. And that's all I have for you, unless you have specific questions.
I don't. Do you have any questions, Thomas?
No, sir.
I would move to set a public hearing on Monday, October 7th, 2019, at 5:30 p.m., or shortly thereafter, at the Thurston County Courthouse, Building One, Room 280, to receive public comments on the proposed 2019 midterm adjustment for the 2019-2020 operating and capital budgets.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to set a public hearing for the midterm, 2019 midterm adjustment for the 2020 budget. Any further discussion, questions, comments?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Now, we're moving into 9B of the agenda, and that's the Commissioners reporting on work sessions. Just being mindful, we have a public hearing, and then we have the Board of Health in 20 minutes. So Commissioner Mensah?
Things that I was able to do beyond my commission and committee assignments, hosting, moderating slash participating in a panel discussion at St. Martin's regarding law and justice, sitting with our Director of Public Defense and our Director of Pretrial Services, with a criminal justice class at St. Martin's, which was really good, a lot of good questions. Attended the Rochester Chamber meeting, gave an update on county business there, attended the Gateway Rotary Fundraiser, attended the Public Works Expo Award Ceremony last night, did a taping in support of our census taking that's happening throughout the spring, encouraging people to cooperate with the folks that are out trying to gather that information, which is important for getting resources for this region in terms of, well, for a whole bunch of reasons, but that's a selfish one that people should be cooperating with the census on. And then attended the Innovative Justice Meeting this morning.
Commissioner Edwards?
Clean water, gophers, and quite a bit of time on the Growth Management Act. I'll just let it go at that.
And for me, the Board of County Commissioners and our county manager, we met with the Lacey City Council last week. I did a speaking engagement last week to the Tumwater Lions Club, and tonight, we're doing an SBSCC ribbon-cutting ceremony. Look forward to that. Now, I'm turning it right over to the county manager.
Yeah, let me walk you briefly through your upcoming schedule, where at least two Commissioners will be present. You may have individual appointments on your individual calendars. Those will not be part of my report. Sooner or after this meeting, you'll have a public hearing where you will be receiving public testimony related to changes to Chapter 2.03, Title II of the Thurston County Code. 5:00 in the afternoon, as Commissioner Hutchins stated, you have an invitation to participate at the South Pugheson Community College Ribbon Cutting Ceremony of opening of a new building on the Lacey campus. Tomorrow, Wednesday, September 11th, you have been invited to participate on the Homes' First Heroes for Housing Breakfast located in South Pugheson Community College in Lacey. At 4:30 in the afternoon tomorrow, September 11th, you have been invited to participate on the Panorama City Annual Event, which is located on the Panorama City Auditorium Plaza. Thursday, September 12th, 9:00 in the morning, you have a briefing related to the five-year homeless housing plan. At 10:00 in the morning, you have a long briefing, 90 minutes related to the comprehensive plan periodic update. At 11:30, you have an executive session related to, as a Board of Health, related to the health officer. And at 3:00 in the afternoon on September 12th, you have updates to the Thurston County Code 15.06, related to the storm and surface water utility rates. This is a follow-up to a briefing that you received two weeks ago. Friday...
Friday, September 13, 4:00 in the afternoon, you have been invited to participate on the Seeds of Change Give Back Garden, that's the annual harvest celebration, which will be located on the juvenile detention center in Mannman Road. And at 6:00 in the afternoon, September 13, you have been invited to participate in the American Legion Post 94 Annual Membership and Award Dinner. Moving on to next week, nothing more combined in the schedule, September 16, and you'll be coming here on September 17, 9:00 in the morning to review the agenda for that meeting. That's all I have for you.
Thank you. Anything to do with the order, Commissioner Menzner?
No.
Commissioner Edwards?
No, sir.
This meeting is now adjourned, and we're going to move right into the public hearing that should have started about 15 minutes ago. And the purpose of the public hearing is to review and receive testimony on a proposed ordinance amending Chapter 2.03 of Title II Thurston County Code relating to the regular meeting times and location of the Thurston County Board of Health. Pursuant to RCW 70.05.030, the Board of County Commissioners, BOCC, shall constitute the Board of Health, the BOH. Pursuant to RCW 42.30.070, the Board of Health shall provide the time for holding regular meetings by ordinance, resolution, bylaws, or whatever other rule is required for the conduct of business by the body. The current Chapter 2.03 of Title II Thurston County Code does not specifically incorporate all the regular meetings currently scheduled by the BOH, and it is appropriate to establish by formal action the time and place for all regular meetings of the BOH to comply with state law and to best inform the citizens of Thurston County. So there is a sign-in sheet in the back of the room. If you would like to sign up and testify, you're more than willing to than welcome to. And you'll have three minutes to testify. I will call out the names for oral testimony. When you hear your name, please come forward to testify. Time may not be donated to another person. So now I'm going to open up the public hearing. And as a staff presentation, Shelley Slaughter, please. The Director of Public Health and Social Services, going to give us background information, written comments submitted, any information that she may have or that we may have questions of.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you so much. Again, I am Shelley Slaughter, Director of Thurston County Public Health and Social Services and Administrator of the Board of Health. As you stated, the purpose of the public hearing is to review and receive testimony to date on a proposed ordinance amending Chapter 2.03 of Title II of the Thurston County Code relating to regular meeting times and location of the Board of Health. The ordinance under consideration revises the Board of Health meeting schedule and location to include setting the second Tuesday of each month beginning at 3:30 today for the transaction of any business required or permitted by law, holding regular meetings on the first Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. and the second Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. of each month, and other special meetings that may be called by the Board of Health as provided by the provisions of RCW 42.30.080. Adjournments, continuances, and executive sessions shall be governed by the provisions of RCW 42.30.090, 42.30.100, and 42.30.110. This ordinance also, proposed amendment also includes allowing Commissioners to participate in meetings by telephone or video conference, provided there's equipment available at the location of the meeting, which will allow all present at the meeting, including the public, to hear the members' voice and for the member participating to hear what else is stated in the meeting. It also codifies in county code updates to the Open Public Meetings Act, requiring the publishing of a daily calendar for all meetings at which two or more Commissioners will be present, and the posting of the agenda for all scheduled meetings. This proposed amendment will improve administrative efficiency, provide greater flexibility to the Board of Health to convene meetings, and continue to provide transparency and proper legal notice to members of the public to view and/or participate in Board of Health meetings. This amendment is in alignment with your Thurston County Strategic Plan Initiative One, Improve Health Outcomes for All, as well as Initiative 13, Increase Opportunities for Informed and Effective Civic Engagement. And we have received no written public comments at this time.
Any questions of Shelley?
I guess I'd just like to be assured that what this is going to do is give the Board of Health a little more leeway to conduct open business throughout different locations possibly or different times, but it'll still all be open to the public. Is that right?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. That's it.
Any questions about this? Nope. Me either. Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
So I've called John Pettit. He's the only one that has signed up thus far to speak. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes from the time you begin.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, or in this particular case, I should say Board of Health members. You know, I actually found this to be a very interesting possibility and consideration that's before you. Reason why is that it somewhat coincides with a particular topic that I've just been suggesting that the Board of Commissioners has to also deal with. Board of Commissioners haven't actually done this particular process for their own ordinance to open it up. In fact, I have the current, the current meeting time and everything listed here. You might want to actually read the code so you understand currently what the limitations are. If you're going to have a meeting after, considered at 5:30, requiring a public hearing has to be deferred from a 2 o'clock. In other words, there is a very distinct process in place right now. The fact that public health wants to create more transparency and wants to create a formal process to follow a written code for doing their meetings properly and in accordance with law and in accordance with state law in fashion, I applaud that. I would, being that this is directed towards the Board of Health, I would just say perhaps if you know anyone that happens to also be a county commissioner, you might pass this on to them that maybe they should be doing the same thing. Ultimately, this is a, an issue which perhaps is going to assist you in making decisions to reconsider or reopen certain issues to make things the right way according to the law. So that being said, I would suggest you move forward and you approve this. Thank you.
Is there anybody that'd like to address the board on this issue? Board of Health? Nope, thank you. Any further discussion?
No.
No, sir.
In this meeting, is this, oh, they have a motion to disclose, or to close the meeting, but do you want to turn it to the County Manager?
Just as a follow-up, you have before you two motions, one to close the public hearing, and the second is perhaps to move and approve the proposal. If you choose to move the proposal, you as a Board of County Commissioners, as you know, amending the Thurston County Code, the next Board of Health, as a Board of Health meetings, you need to reaffirm this action. So Shelley will need to bring another item, the upcoming Board of Health meeting related to this particular change. You as a Board of Health also need to take an action on that respect. So I just want to clarify the couple of steps that you need to take.
So if the Board so chooses, we would approve it now?
As a Board of County Commissioners and the Board of Health needs to, you as a Board of Health needs to affirm at an upcoming meeting.
Okay. And then what ordinance would be popping in here?
There is no, if I may, your option is stated on the agenda today, not on the script.
Oh, here we go. Thank you. I was looking at the script. Okay. So now, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I would move to close this public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close a public hearing. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed. Now, what's the pleasure of the board?
How long has this, well, I have a question, Shelley. Can I do that?
Yeah, do the motion second, and then we'll discuss it further.
Okay. I would move to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 2.03 of Title II Thurston County Code relating to the regular meeting times and location of the Thurston County Board of Health.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance amendment. Further discussion?
I was just curious how long this has been out in the public domain to be discussed? I mean, how long ago or did it go out? I can't remember now.
Since you said the public hearing.
Which was about a month ago?
I believe 20, over 20 days ago. Yeah.
Yes, it was over 20 days ago, and then if you will recall, it was orig, this hearing was originally scheduled for the Labor, the Tuesday following Labor Day, and then it was rescheduled and reset for today. So the public has received adequate notice of this hearing today.
Thank you. That was my concern.
Okay, good. Any further discussion? Great. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. And that concludes this business. Now we're going to move into, at 3:30, into the Board of Health. We're adjourned.
Do we have a six-minute break?
Yep, we do. Yep, we do. And good afternoon. Welcome to the Board of Health meeting for Tuesday, September 10, 2019. By way of introduction, I'm John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board. And Vice Chair is, who's the Vice Chair? Yeah. Commissioner Mensah. I'm going backwards now. We just finished a BOCC meeting. And Commissioner Gary Edwards. And Clerk of the Board is Lady Hodgkinson. And to her right is PHSS Department Director Shelley Slaughter. And to her right is Dr. Rachel Wood, our County Health Officer. And to her right is County Manager Ramiro Chavez. And so with that, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And we do have one change before we approve the agenda. Just to let my seatmates know, remind you that one of the agenda items has been removed already. And it's Agenda Item Number Six. And we talked about that this morning. And it's the Healthy Schools Pilot that Sammy Berg was going to present on. But due to lack of time, because we have a hard stop this afternoon, this is going to be rescheduled. That item will be rescheduled for October.
Okay.
So we can get that Healthy Schools Pilot discussion. So with that, I look for an approval of this agenda that we're holding our hands.
Moved to approve Agenda for September 10th, as revised.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Nope? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have that agenda. Now, approval of the minutes, meeting minutes from August 13, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any changes or amendments?
No.
Nope? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's done. Now we're moving to Agenda Item Number Two, Proclamations and Presentations. The first one is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And Jennifer Simmons, please, Education Outreach Specialist.
Thank you, Board of Health, for recognizing today as World Suicide Day and also the month as Suicide Awareness Month. So I would like to introduce to you two members of Thurston Youth Alive. Thurston Youth Alive is a countywide effort to prevent youth suicide. Thurston Youth Alive strives to prevent youth suicide by raising community awareness of the risks and warning signs, knowing the resources, and fostering an environment that promotes resiliency and community. Scott Hanauer is the Chair of Thurston Youth Alive. And he brings with him Kyler Maddox, our youth representative, to the group. After Scott and Kyler speak, we'll have Mark Moffett from the county's Public Health and Social Services Department to talk about, to share a few words about how the veteran community is impacted by this issue. Scott, just to give you a brief bio, so you know who you're listening to. Scott retired as Chief Executive Officer of the Community Youth Services in 2018. And in his retirement, he consults with nonprofit service agencies and provides trainings with the University of Washington School of Social Work, with a special emphasis on trauma. He is a published author and a lifelong champion of youth and families within the foster care system. Kyler is an amazing sixteen-year-old who has been with Thurston Youth Alive since its inception. Kyler attends New Market in the Youth Build Program through Community Youth Services, and he's brought a much-needed youth voice to this conversation. And then we also, I want to recognize, members of our newly-formed Community Coalition Tumwater Hopes, who are here today in the audience. And Tumwater Hopes has adopted youth suicide prevention into their five-year strategic plan. So they're here to lend their support to this effort as well. So without further ado.
Welcome, Scott.
Pardon?
Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. So my name is Scott Hanauer. I'm one of the facilitators of the Thurston Youth Alive Committee through Family Education and Support Services. A little bit of context is that, over the years, as a clinician and a therapist, I worked with many, many young people who have expressed desire to commit suicide, have attempted suicide. And never once in any of those kids, did any of those kids ever say they wanted to die. What they said was that they could no longer live with the pain that they were experiencing. They could not see a lifetime of living with the pain that they were living with. They lost hope. John Toonheim is right on the mark when he's talking about building hope in our community. And I hope that that hope trickles down to the vulnerable young people in our community. Suicidality is not a single story, meaning it doesn't happen to other people's kids. It doesn't happen to other families. It doesn't happen in other communities. It happens across the board. Some of the data that we know, that Marianne O'Garrow has provided for us, is that 22% of sixth graders in Thurston County have seriously considered suicide. Twenty-two percent. That's almost a quarter. Seven percent of sixth graders have actually attempted suicide. Twelve percent of 10th graders have attempted suicide. And 25% of 10th and 12th graders have seriously considered suicide. That data is even more pronounced for youth of color and for LGBTQ youth. Those numbers go up quite a bit. We also know the drivers of youth and child suicide ideation. What we know is that 58% of eighth graders describe feeling nervous or anxious on a regular basis. That's more than half. Forty-five percent of eighth graders describe feeling unable to stop or control the worry or the anxiety that they experience. Forty-four percent of 12th graders describe being depressed. When adults on the Thurston Youth Alive Committee heard those statistics, we were pretty shocked, quite frankly, because that wasn't what we expected. But when we, the youth who are on the Thurston Youth Alive Committee heard that data, their response was, "Sounds pretty typical to us." So that data, although alarming to the adults, was not untypical for what the kids' experience was. I'd like to introduce Kyler Maddox. Kyler and I have been acquainted for about six years. We were neighbors. One of the things that I'll always be grateful for Kyler is, a number of years ago, I had a pretty big challenge with cancer and recovery from cancer. And Kyler, who lived across the street from us, came to our house three times a day, at least every single day, for months and months, up to a year, asking what he could do to help. When I finally got my physical health back, he was the one that helped me walk around our cul-de-sac, which was about 100 yards, which is about all I could do. But eventually, we went on hikes. Eventually, we went on bike rides. And he's a significant part of my recovery from cancer. So Kyler?
So we know all the risks, like the risk factors and the stressors for the teens, because you can, you can, you start seeing that, they say no one cares, and that they're seen as different or weird, or they're worth this, or rumors about them that they cannot control. Their home life, being lonely, bullying, they think that they don't belong, like, in their community or in their school. Parents and families fighting, being judged and pressured. And those are, like, some of the risks that I see in teens in my school or my community that I see that they, that's how they're feeling now. And we don't, this is why youth don't ask for help, because they don't want to admit their problems. They, they're afraid people are going to make fun of them. And counseling is scary. I mean, from my own experience, I don't like counseling. I don't, but it helps. And they're afraid people are going to tell on them, and they're going to be judged. And they're afraid counseling is going to make their problems worse. They believe that nothing will help. They believe that nothing, their counseling, they don't think counseling will help, or any type of help, even peer-to-peer. They don't think that would help. They don't want anyone to know that they have problems and that they can't trust anyone. And that's all I have for you today.
Thank you, Kyler.
So Kyler has been an instrumental part of the Thurston Youth Alive, because one of the things that we learned from the youth on the committee is they're the first in their school, they're the first in the community to know who in their school and who in their community is the most at risk. Kyler recently provided some pretty remarkable research related to what youth can do in schools and in communities to support those youth who they recognize as being at risk in looking at the risk factors and the warning signs of suicide. We believe that building resiliency is the key to overcoming this, and not just resiliency within youth, but resiliency within families. I believe, personally believe, that many families in our community and across our country have increased risk factors and decreased protective factors, which trickles down to the young people that they're serving or that they're caring for. Being empathic is the key. When people either give empathy or receive empathy, that their dopamine level goes up, that's a good thing, when dopamine levels go up. When people, empathic means listening, to hear versus listening to solve a problem, offering unconditional support. One of the things that some of the research from the University of Washington School of Medicine talks about with empathy is to listen for five minutes without interruption, without feeling like somebody's got to jump in. So if we can implement some of these tools in our school, if we can implement them in peer-to-peer relationships, that's going to make a huge difference. We also want to be able to acknowledge and appreciate and be grateful that people have shared their challenges, because as Kyler just said in his part, that there's a lot of drivers for why young people are not going to talk about the things that are going on, and that they're going to suffer silently in some ways. What we ask from our community is to get the word out, help us get the word out. Our committee's next steps is to collaborate with many other organizations that are having similar initiatives, the Nisqually Tribe, Pizza Clutch is another one, that we really want to engage those agencies that are working with young people to come up with a plan so that those first responders, the youth, have an ability to respond to the people that they know who are at risk in their community. If you can help us get the word out, if you have ideas about how we can get the word out, we'd be very much appreciative of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't leave yet.
Don't leave?
No. We're coming up, because Mark will be coming up next, and then, I have some questions or comments for Scott or Kyler?
What school do you go to, Kyler?
New Market now.
New Market. And I gather that the Youth Alive draws kids from different schools? Or you said?
Yes. We're, we want to enhance the youth participation on the committee. And we have to figure out kind of the pragmatics of doing that, in terms of, you know, when do we have meetings? And can we, we don't want to do it during school time, or when, you know, young people have other obligations. And we want to be able to recompense people for participating in the committee.
I'm one of those adults that's pretty shocked by the numbers that I've now heard three or four times in different presentations.
Sure.
And you were, your metrics were sixth and eighth graders, and I have a sixth and eighth grader at home. So this is like, right, you know? I can connect this to my kids and their friends and the social worlds that they have at their school. So.
Yep.
Thank you guys for working on this issue, and we support you 100%.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Scott, I want to take this opportunity, these other folks in the room have probably heard me say this, but kids are 30% of our population, but they're 100% of our future. And that is why it is so important that we get this right, because those young people are going to be sitting here one of these days. And I want to thank you so much for putting the extra effort in that you're doing. And thank you, Kyle, for taking that on and helping Scott, too.
Sure. Thank you very much.
But I didn't, I've already learned a couple of things. I didn't know you were an author, and I'll talk more about that later. But I've been doing this kind of work, you know, in public safety for many decades. I've never heard, the way you put it, to put a pall and the seriousness on this topic, that of all the kids you've spoken with, none of them said they wanted to die, they just couldn't live with the pain.
Yes.
That's powerful. Oh, my gosh. That really got my attention. And Kyler, my gosh, you're an amazing, an amazing human being. You're a compassionate, empathetic human being. And I can't thank you enough for what you're doing for your peers, but also what you're doing for a good friend, Scott Hanauer. I mean, that's a significant emotional experience dealing with someone as a caregiver. God, good for you. God love you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Kyler's my retirement plan. Thank you very much.
Well said. Thank you. Mark Moffett. Community Program Manager. Yay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Another serious topic.
It is. It's the same topic.
Yeah.
Just for the people at home, I'm Mark Moffett with the Veterans Assistance Program here for Thurston County. I'm also here to talk about suicide awareness, but from a veteran perspective. It's true that 30,000, there are 30,000 veterans that make up our Thurston County residents. It's also true that there's, or veterans commit suicide at a much higher rate than their civilian counterparts. But you know what else is true? That the outcome of those suicides is the same, regardless of what group we split them up into. It destroys a life, a viable life. It destroys the lives around those people, and it continues on longer after that suicide happens. When I was at Fort Lewis, as a commander, I had to train my soldiers on suicide prevention every year. Every year, we did that training. Typically, in the civilian population, that never happens, right? And so here at Thurston County, we will train on suspicious emails, bloodborne pathogens, emergency management. We know what to do in the event of an active shooter. But do we know what to do when a coworker or a family member shows signs of depression? What are the signs of depression? Do we know how to react when somebody has suicidal ideations? I contest we don't. And yet, we're more likely to encounter those situations than we are an active shooter in the workplace. So my challenge to the Board of Health, and the Board of County Commissioners, maybe they're listening as well, is to implement, implement an annual suicide prevention program for all Thurston County employees, similar to how the military does it. I think, and I'd be the first one to volunteer for an implementation and development committee for that one, because if we are truly serious that one suicide is too many, then what are we going to do today to prevent or to make suicides a thing of the past? Awareness is the first step, and that's what we're doing here. But action. Action is where we're going to see true progress in reducing the number of suicides in all groups. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mark. Do you have any, oh, don't, hang on. Any questions or comments for Mark?
I don't think so.
You know, Mark, isn't there 22 a day? Isn't that kind of this, what we talk about once in a while?
That was from 2012. It goes up and down. It's still way too many.
Way too many. Yeah. Kind of scary what we heard about 22% of those young people, too, even thinking about it.
Yes, sir.
Kind of a bad number, that 22.
Well, I appreciate your service for our country and to our community and to the veterans. Thank you very much for that. And I wrote that down to bring forward about an annual, an awareness training program.
Thank you, sir.
So thank you.
Yep, thanks.
All right.
Proclamation time?
Pardon me?
Proclamation time?
Yeah, where is it?
I got it.
Oh, you got it. Oh, here they are. Okay.
Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, September 8 through 14, 2019 is National Suicide Prevention Week, and suicide prevention is a priority in our community. And whereas suicide is the eighth-leading cause of death for Thurston County residents and leading cause of death among county youth age 10 through 17. And whereas one in every five Thurston County sixth graders and one in every four Thurston County 10th grader have seriously considered taking their own life. And whereas Thurston County is home to active-duty service members and military veterans, and every other day in Washington, a veteran dies by suicide. And whereas thinking about suicide occurs regardless of age, gender, race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, income level, religion, profession, or background. And whereas talking about suicide does not increase the risk for suicide, and everyone can have a conversation with someone they are worried or concerned about. And whereas there is no single cause for suicide, but there are warning signs that we can learn more about. And whereas demonstrating care and compassion about suicide is something each and every one of us can do. And whereas local groups like Thurston Youth Alive, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, and many others are working to increase awareness of what can be done to prevent suicide and provide resources in our communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Health hereby proclaims September Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Thurston County and encourages all residents to envision a world dedicated to saving lives and bringing hope to those affected by suicide through prevention education, advocacy, and resources. Adopted this 10th day of September, 2019.
There you have it. There's the proclamation. So we have a copy for our participants, and let's come up here to the front and get a picture. Next, we have Septic Smart Week. Art Starry. Yay, Art.
So this is not quite so heavy and serious as what we just had, so, but I, but nonetheless, it's important. In Thurston County, we have about 54,000 septic- it's important. In Thurston County, we have about 54,000 septic systems. They're onsite sewage systems. They're responsible for treating and disposing of something about, like about 12 million gallons of wastewater per day. That's about as much as the wastewater treatment plant down at law. And so what we want to do, and what it actually started as a national effort and is also being done at the state level, there's a proclamation by the governor about Septic Smart Week. And what we're asking you to do here today is to have a proclamation about Septic Smart Week being next week. And it's important because properly functioning onsite sewage systems do a good job of treating wastewater. They help replenish groundwater. They do, again, a tremendous job of protecting our water resources. However, when they fail or when they malfunction, they can be a problem in a bunch of different ways. One is that they can impair public health by contaminating surface water, contaminating groundwater. There's been shellfish closures associated with failing onsite systems. There's problems like that, so there's a big public health thing. But there's also a big economic cost to the property owner. Someone who owns a failing septic system has something in the neighborhood of 15 to 20, maybe $30,000 of repairs. And so it's important for folks to be able to evaluate the onsite system, know what to do to look at them, and hopefully keep bad things from happening. And so that's why we're asking you to declare Septic Smart Week. We have some classes, and I think there's a, there is a flyer up there that Lydia is going to pop up, or that's up there that talks about some classes that are coming next week where folks can learn about how to maintain and monitor their septic systems. And we also have some folks from the onsite industry here that I want to recognize. And it's really important, as well as some of our staff. Wow, everybody snuck in on me. But, you know, it's not, as you know, this isn't just something that government, you know, has a rule about and everything happens perfectly. We need a lot of other folks to actually make this happen, whether it's our staff or whether it's folks in the industry. So there are some folks who might want to take a minute or two to talk to you. There's some folks from the Washington Onsite Sewage Association. There's Chuck Aarons, Adriana, and Jeremiah. I got the names right. Wow. And we also have Evan Cusack, who's in the back row. He's an onsite maintenance professional and an installer, too, right?
I don't really guess, but don't do much.
Don't do much of that. And then Steve Pershan, who's also in the back row there. He's an onsite installer. And WOSA, I'll just give you a quick overview. They're a nonprofit organization. What we, what they do to really help us is they provide training for onsite professionals. They offer classes and things. And what they're able to do is provide training that's consistent across the Puget Sound area. There's a bunch of counties who use their classes, and that really helps the folks who are in the industry because if they take the WOSA test, not only does it work for Thurston County, but it works for Pierce County. I think it works for Kitsap County, and there's some others. They do a really good job of providing the sort of training that's necessary for our staff and for professionals to monitor and maintain these systems. Some of them are very complex. They have all sorts of computer panels. There's pumps and controls and things. You know, even though I've been dealing with this stuff for years and years, I would be hesitant to try to maintain one of those systems without proper training. There's, so they do that, and there's other things that maybe they'll talk about. Evan and Steve, I kind of like, they're some of our best professionals, and they often deal with the most complex systems. Steve has some very special equipment that deals with repairing onsite systems. He's got itty-bitty machines and deals with complex systems. And Evan is really good at monitoring and maintaining things and helping make sure that systems run okay. And he's very good at providing advice. All these folks are very good at that. So that's why we're asking you to proclaim this. Again, there's workshops that are coming up. One tomorrow in, at the McLean Fire Station, and then there's also some coming up in the next week or so at Yelm Community Center and at Thurston County Courthouse, right here. And so the brochure up there tells you about that. I also have extra copies if people want them. September 11th at McLean Fire Station, September 18th at Yelm Community Center, and September 26th at the courthouse.
Perfect.
So without me blathering on anymore, I'll ask the other folks if they want to come up and say anything. So.
Art, I applaud you taking, getting all this information out in a short order. And you folks are very welcome to come up and say something if you're brief, because we have a hard stop. We have an event at 5:00 we need to be to in Lacey.
So Jeremiah or Steve? Want to say anything or Evan? Anybody?
Stop it, Art.
I was thinking about it. Okay. I just want to take advantage of the chance of being called to the Health Department and not being in trouble.
Introduce yourself, though, please. Thank you.
My name's Jeremiah Gune. I'm here with WOSA. And we really just want to take advantage of this opportunity to thank Thurston County for their forward movement and their forward thought with this. As I was listening to the previous presenters and listening to some of the numbers, found this as more of a celebration for us. Today, 4,000 children will pass away to diarrhea directly related to poor wastewater management practices. However, none of those children, to the best of my knowledge, will come from this county. So the choices and the decisions that we're often making do not seem to weigh heavy on our hearts because we don't have the evidence directly in front of us. But in other parts of the world, today and today alone, we will lose 30,000 children due to 11 completely preventable diseases directly related to poor wastewater management. And again, to the best of my knowledge, none of those 30,000 children will come out of this county. So again, we just want to thank you for all of you guys' hard work and encourage you to keep up the effort to look at this as a sustainable way to grow and develop our infrastructure. Thanks, guys.
Wow, beautiful. And well done, too. We have a proclamation. Art, you're not done?
Well, I was going to say that there's a fair number of our staff here. If they just want to stand up really quick, our onsite staff, I could go through all their names, but I know we're in the interest of time. But I want you to know that we have a lot of hardworking staff.
Stand up, staff. Stand up.
Stand up, onsite staff.
Yep, stand up.
And so I will now let you proclaim Septic Smart Week next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank all of you. You have a question or comment?
Well, I just want to compliment Art because I had clams out of Eld Inlet for the weekend. And I want to make sure you know that they were safe. I'm here.
Any other issues?
Not one of those issues.
Okay. Comments or questions?
Quickly, this board spends a lot of time talking about water quality. I serve on the lots board. I serve on the Alliance for Healthy South Sound Executive Committee. I serve on the Salmon Recovery Council. I serve on the Shaleus Basin Partnership, and I serve on the Shaleus Flood Authority. So I spend a lot of my job working on water issues. So I'm behind you guys 100%. If you have new ideas for the commission, new policy ideas, come to me. I'm always happy to think about new ways we can improve our water quality all across the county.
And then, since they didn't come up to the front, Evan and Steve, do you want to stand up really quick just so they could recognize you as well? Thank you. Thank you.
There you go. Get your own recognition.
I don't see anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Art. This is a hot topic, and it will always, it'll continue to be a hot topic. Yes, go ahead.
Septic Smart Week. Whereas Thurston County's mission is to create a community that promotes health, commerce, and environmental protection with transparency and accountability. And whereas proper septic system use and routine care help avoid costly septic system repairs and protect the investment that homeowners have in their septic systems. And whereas septic systems that are properly designed and maintained are vital to protecting public health, our invaluable drinking water, lakes, rivers, streams, Puget Sound, and our shellfish industry, which produces almost 6 million pounds of shellfish each year. And whereas there are nearly 54,000 septic systems in Thurston County that treat and dispose of almost 12 million gallons of sewage per day. And whereas Thurston County's onsite system professionals, our environmental health division staff, and our community partners use their expertise in the design, installation, maintenance, and regulation of septic systems in our county. And whereas the EPA and Governor of the State of Washington have declared September 16th through 20th, 2019, as Septic Smart Week to increase awareness and highlight the need for proper septic system maintenance across the state. And whereas Thurston County Public Health and Social Services Department is conducting free Septic Sense workshops on September 11th, 18th, and 26th to teach people how to prolong the life of their septic systems and learn about loans for septic system repairs and replacement. Now, therefore, the Thurston County Board of Health hereby proclaims the week of September 16th through 20, 2019 as Septic Smart Week, encourages Thurston County septic system owners to learn about their septic systems, and for all residents of Thurston County to join in this special observance that contributes to thriving, hopeful, healthy communities where all people are safe and supported by our environment, and our environment is protected.
You know, this is such a vital topic for our water quality and such, that Lot, the treatment plant, their unofficial motto is, "You eat it, we treat it." And so when it comes to septic, it's on us, who are on septic, to maintain and take care and care for our septic systems, because we all live with that. So anyway, with that, great proclamation. Yep, and we'll have all of you, whoever needs to come up, come on up, come on up to receive a proclamation.
All right, come on, Amy. We'll get down here. I'll get down here.
All right, smile, please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You all get him another one.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Septic is fun. All right, now we're at the part of the agenda. Ooh, opportunity for the public to address the board. And I don't know if anybody has signed up just yet. I'm looking, I'm looking, someone's looking. Oh. Thank you very much for doing that. Is it you?
It is me.
Oh, there's a couple. Okay, so here's the rules for engagement. Rosalinda Noriega?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You and Jason Greer is next. He's on standby. He's on standby. You have three minutes. We have a timer, and I'll slow down so you can figure that out. The timer, you have three minutes. Time is down. It dings when you're done. If you're mid-sentence, go ahead and finish. And just introduce yourself and about where you live and get going.
Great. So I'm Rosalinda Noriega. I'm the Executive Director of Pizza Clutch, and I live in West Olympia. I want to thank the Board of Health for proclaiming this month Suicide Awareness Prevention Month. And I want to tell you that lesbian, gay, and bisexual youth are four times more likely to attempt suicide than their straight peers. According to a study by the Trevor Foundation, by the Trevor Project, as a result of family rejection, discrimination, criminalization, and a host of other factors, LGBTQ youth represent as much as 40% of the homeless youth population. And of that population, studies indicate that as many as 60% are likely to attempt suicide. Pizza Clutch's mission is to foster resiliency in LGBTQ and allied youth, to create a safe and positive school experience through support, education, and empowerment. Our vision is that LGBTQ and allied youth will be empowered to self-advocate, build community, develop confidence, and easily access resources as they explore and develop their identities. We're now in our 12th year of operation, and Pizza Clutch is in every public high school in Thurston County. And we're in one middle school, Kamachan Middle School, providing lifesaving support group services in the schools. In the 2018-19 school year, we saw over 440 individual youth across Thurston County participate in Pizza Clutch support groups. 68% of those participants reported attempts of deliberately trying to hurt themselves, but since attending Pizza Clutch, that number drops almost in half. 32% of our participants reported attempted suicide prior to attending Pizza Clutch, and this percentage drops to 10% after attending Pizza Clutch. But of that 32%, that equates to 141 individual LGBTQ youth in this county that have attempted suicide. So what can we learn from these numbers? According to the study by the Trevor Project, LGBTQ youth report that if they have at least one accepting adult, they were 40% less likely to attempt suicide in the past year. So the things that people can take away from this to help prevent the risk of suicide is to connect the person to resources and the support of trusted adults. Accept and listen to a person's feelings and take them seriously. Respond if they have a plan to commit suicide, and empower the person to call for help. So there's a local, the Trevor Project operates a 24/7 crisis line for youth that can be reached at 866-488-7386, or 866-4YOUTH-TREVER. Thank you.
Wow, thank you. Now, we're not supposed to engage a public comment, but I'm going to engage my seatmates here. We're pretty, I was going to say, we're pretty fortunate to have Rosalinda.
Yep.
Do a public comment. Go ahead.
I guess I'm, I don't know if I'm disappointed, but I wish you would have been here along with the other presentations, and hopefully next year, we can make some kind of inclusion in here. And then we wouldn't have to break protocol. We could just go ahead with the information that you've got to share that is very important.
Yeah. Anything? I don't leave you out. Thank you very much, Rosalinda.
Thank you.
Jason Greer?
I don't.
You sure? Okay. Oh, it says no. Good job. But thanks for being here, anyway. Appreciate that. That takes us to, oh, does anybody else in the audience want to address the board? Okay. Agenda item number four, department item, septic system maintenance. Art Story. No, no, it's not.
I've changed.
Jane.
Art transformed. I'm Jane Mountrey-Vanning, Thurston County Environmental Health, and going to present a little bit about some of the results of both regulatory approach and several different education approaches to encouraging folks to get their septic systems regularly inspected, pumped, and otherwise maintained. As has been mentioned, we have, we have a little over 54,000 septic systems in the county, which is actually about 1,400 more than there were three years ago. I had our computer guy run the numbers. And most of the systems, about somewhere between 2/3 and 3/4, do not require renewable operational certificates. You know, somewhere between 1/4 and 1/3 do require renewables operational certificates, which requires that people have their system inspected by a professional or take our training class and become certified to do that themselves, and submit those inspection reports to the Health Department, and then follow up with repairing any deficiencies or getting their tank pumped if it's time to have it pumped. You might require an operational certificate depending on two major categories. One is if your system is in a marine recovery area, that is Henderson and Esquali Shelffish Protection Districts, in which case all of the systems, all of the septic systems require this renewable operational certificate. And that's where we have our best, our highest numbers of people who are getting their systems maintained and cared for in a timely fashion. So 88% are having regular inspections there. And I think that's about the highest number in the whole Puget Sound. Yes, yes, I'm sorry. The next category of folks who require operational certificates are throughout the whole county, but those are the folks who have these more complex systems. Typically, they're in areas that might have poor soils, or there's a whole variety of reasons. And these folks still have very good rate of compliance. About 84% are having their systems inspected in a timely fashion. And typically, that's either every three years or every year, depending on the complexity of the system. I will say that these are the folks who tend to be, in some cases, the most frustrated in that we often have situations where a resident has a new system that requires these regular inspections. Meanwhile, the other neighbors on the block, similar soils, but older systems that haven't failed yet, do not. And so they get upset that they have to do this and pay us a fee, whereas the neighbors don't. So those are the two types of folks who require these operational certificates. Then, we were very concerned with Eld Inlet because the water quality there, while good and meeting water quality standards, is declining. So we were able to secure a grant to do some intensive outreach and education in the Eld Inlet watershed. At about the same time, two different community groups, the Summit Lake, one of the community at Summit Lake, and the Black Lake Special District, were also embarking on some education and outreach to their residents, to their community members. So it provided this great opportunity to see what happens with enhanced education outreach. What do we get as far as inspections go? So starting with Summit Lake, in these other areas, Summit, Eld, and So starting with Summit Lake, in these other areas, Summit, Eld, and Black Lake, there are people in those communities who do require operational certificates because they have the more complex systems. So in Summit Lake, where you have required operational certificates, about three-quarters are getting their inspections done, kind of on time. In the rest of the folks, which is still the majority, just like in the very first slide, 30% are getting inspections done, or pumping or maintenance done within three years. If you don't require an operational certificate, and we're not following up and telling you you need to get this done, while we recommend that everyone inspect their system annually, we also say most people need to pump it between three to five years. So we decided to look out six years, figuring that would capture the people who maybe weren't gonna inspect, but we're just gonna call a professional to have it pumped. So that's the lighter green number, the 12%. But still, then we have 58% who have not had any documented inspections or pumping within the last six years. And just a reminder, Summit Lake does drink the lake water, so they have good reason to want to keep their septic systems working properly. So Black Lake Special District was formed to help protect the lake, and they contacted us to see if they could get information about who was and wasn't, you know, maintaining their systems based on our records. And they have been sending out, I believe, annual letters to the folks who we have no records of having done any maintenance, to encourage them, you know, from the community to get that done. So again, some folks require operational certificates, and 84% of them are getting their inspections done in a timely manner. And the rest of the folks who don't require the operational certificates, again, about a third have had inspections or pumping done in three years, another 17% within six years, but just under half have had no documented maintenance in the last six years. And then Eld Inlet, where we had the grant to really do some intensive work, we did both letters to folks who we had no records of having done any maintenance. We also offered extra workshops in the area, including the ability to get certified to self-inspect for the folks whose systems qualified. And we did social media outreach and some other kind of media and social outreach. So again, where folks had required operational certificates, they were up to about 86% having inspections, where they did not. Again, we're looking at a little over a third within three years, a little under a half, or a little over a half, I guess, a little over a half altogether if you look at six years, and about 41% who have had no documented inspections or maintenance or pumping or anything in the last six years. So if we spread out then and look, well, how's that compare to the whole county if we haven't had any, well, this is everyone, including the folks in these areas that have had special outreach, but looking countywide. For folks without operational certificates, back in 2016, before these education efforts got underway, 62% had not had any documented maintenance in six years. As of July 1st, after some of these outreach efforts, we're at about, just under half have not had that thing. So the education did move the bar, so we're glad about that. But there still is a lot of folks who have not had any kind of maintenance within six years. And then finally, we backed out again to look at the whole county and look at everybody, whether they required an operational certificate or did not. And again, you know, almost three, two-thirds of the systems do not require these operational certificates, so how does it look? Again, in 2016, about 58%, almost 60% did not have the needed maintenance, and today we're at about 50/50. So wanted to bring those statistics up, and we'll, these are fresh numbers, so we're still digesting those, and we'll figure out our next steps and be in further discussion, no doubt.
Jane?
Yeah.
By any chance, how does time of sale work out on this whole formula that you're explaining?
Yeah.
And do you do some type of an inspection at the time of sale?
At a time of sale, if you have a septic system, there is a requirement to have an inspection done and a pumping done. So those numbers would be part of these roll-up numbers that we have. I didn't differentiate those numbers, I didn't pull those out.
Okay, so that is included.
They're incorporated into these numbers, yeah.
Okay. And point is, time of sale, is that averaging out about seven years? Or what is it?
I think it's higher than that now. I think what's happened with the economic recovery, that there's more home sales, and so I think the number, the frequency is more of seven years. But I should, I'll find that number out for you.
And for those people that live in a neighborhood where their neighbors don't, but they have to, we do offer them a free class to do their own inspection, is that right?
No. The place where we have the class to do, well, there's two parts to that. It's the marine recovery areas, Henderson and Esquali, that have the classes, that folks can become certified to self-inspect. And that's because the funding for that is part of the fee that they pay. For the most part, the other people who require operational certificates, their systems would not qualify for self-inspection because they're too complex. There are some who would if we had that program, but we do not have the funding source to provide that for them. We were able to do some with Eld through the grant funding to include that in our classes, but we would need to offer many more classes, and that's staff-intensive.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Jane, how are you, for households that don't require the certificate, how are you figuring out the status of their?
Good question. So, when a septic professional does a pumping or an inspection, a pumping, they fill out, they have to report that to the Health Department through this computer thing called Online Army. So that's the records we looked at. I will say that that doesn't include somebody like me who has a septic system that doesn't require an operational certificate. I actually do get out there every year and inspect it, but I don't really have a way of sending that information into the Health Department. So, in that sense, it might be somewhat under-reported, but it's the best we've got right now. But the pumping, you know, we look at pumping, and honestly, a lot of people don't want to really look at their septic systems. They'd rather hire somebody to do the pumping when it's needed and call it good.
Go ahead.
Beans, we have some professionals in the field, maybe I'd ask this question. Is there any chance that for those people like yourself that aren't required, that there could be some kind of a mechanism to test? And I mean, I know we can do the solids below, solids above, add them up, does it need to be pumped? Okay, I mean, I get that part of it. But is there any way that we could come up, or that maybe the industry already has this in place, that you could go out to the drain field itself, and then set distance, I don't know, 20 feet away, 40 feet away, whatever it would be, put a probe down in the ground, you know, where you're actually testing that water that's in the ground, the ground at that point, that's obviously been released from that drain field, to see if those systems had a little too much bacteria, or not enough, maybe, I don't know. If it was, if there was no bacteria, you know, if somebody flushed bleach every day or something, there'd probably be nothing, and that's probably not good either, because then the contaminants are getting in. But is there anything like that that you're aware of, that we could look into, to see if we could go out for that group of people that are in that category, like you are? We could just, you know, hammer something in three feet deep, take a core sample, test it with a blue strip, or whatever, and find out, are they in need of help? Is there anything like that?
Jane, hang on. Do you folks have business cards? You might want to leave them here, because he'll give you a call, he'll give you a call.
Okay. We've got a short time to conduct this meeting, so I gotta get back on my, I gotta sit down.
Because the topic, Commissioner Edwards loves the date.
Clean water is my thing, so, okay.
But did you have an answer, though, a short one, Jane, for that, or no?
I'm not aware of something like that. The soil does the final treatment, so you'd want to, you know, be able to make sure that you were collecting whatever you were collecting someplace where the soil had been treating it. Our dye tests are one way that we test the whole system, by collecting where the water comes out of the ground again, either seeps or, you know, creeks or whatnot.
Yeah, when it's coming out, it stinks and your grass is all green, I know what that is.
Commissioner Menzel, go ahead.
Certificate, if you're required to do a certificate, I mean, my question is kind of what does that involve? Because I lived on a septic in Fairbanks, Alaska, and we just, I just had to, I didn't have to do anything, I just had to get it pumped. And just like you said, the pumper had to file the certificate. And as long as I did that, there was zero administration, and all the borough had to do is just cross, just check off that they had a proof of pumping every, whatever it was, 18 months or three years, I don't remember. But I'm just, I've always been a little mystified about why that has to be complex, to just have people pumping their septic on some kind of schedule.
So, that would be one approach. We, there's the part about looking at the tank and pumping it, but there's other components to the septic system. So the, you know, the drain field, the pup chamber, if you have one, some have sand filters, some have disinfecting units, some of them are pretty complex. So those are the ones that require more looking after. And in some cases, we do actually ask for samples at the, after a disinfection unit, to make sure that they're treating the sewage the way that it's supposed to be treated.
But is the home, my question is, does the homeowner right now have to do something affirmative, or does it happen through their inspectors that they hire? Like, is there a burden?
Right, they could do it either way.
Is there a burden on the homeowner?
Yeah, the homeowner can call a septic professional, and they'll take care of it, and submit everything they need to submit. The homeowner has to, you know, choose their professional and pay them, and it'll help. But yeah, the professionals will do that. Some choose to take the class and learn how to do the inspection themselves, because, again, they may, you know, depending on how big your house is and how many people live in it, it may not need pumping all that often, but it still needs to be inspected regularly. So they learn how to do those inspections and submit those, and then wait till it actually needs pumping to get it pumped, and they call the professional at that point.
Okay.
Jane, thank you so much for giving an expeditious presentation. Great, I appreciate it, thank you. Now, let's see if Chris Hawkins can beat your time. This is Back to School Travel: Health and Safety. Welcome, Chris.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chris Hawkins, Program Manager with Thurston County Public Health and Social Services. And I'm here to talk to you about our, well, as you can tell from my dress today, I have a bit of a safety message. It's also the first half of September, so this is back-to-school time. And I'm here to share with you an update on the programs that we do in Safe Roots to School. So, and I'm joined here by a couple partners in the audience. Paul Brewster from Thurston Regional Planning Council, Principal Jason Greer from Olympic View Elementary School, which is in North Thurston Public Schools, and Bernie Sisson, who's here from Thurston County Public Works. All important partners in this Safe Roots to School effort, because public health plays a role in that. It's primarily on the sort of education and encouragement aspect of Safe Roots to School, but there are other dynamics to this kind of program. I wanted to start off with a little bit of data that gives you some sense of what we're trying to accomplish with Safe Roots to School, which is, to a large degree, it's about trying to encourage people to be more physically active. So every trip to school is an opportunity for kids and families to get a little more physical activity in their day. For kids, the recommendation is that they get 60 minutes of physical activity every day. For adults, it's a little bit less than that. But we want to try to encourage more physical activity. A big part of that is these trips that people take around town. That's an opportunity to either walk or bicycle, or use some kind of active transportation. And so, I show up here some data from the last couple of Healthy Youth surveys that show that only about 1 in 4 sixth graders, and closer to 1 in 3 eighth graders are walking or bicycling to school on a regular basis. So we have some room for improvement there. Also, we can see that a similar percentage of those kids at those age levels are getting the recommended levels of physical activity. So combining those two, we can start to achieve better physical activity, better overall health for kids and families in our community. Another aspect, dynamic here is safety. So injury prevention is one of the roles that we play in public health. So this effort kind of links to Target Zero efforts by the Prosecuting Attorney's Office, and in collaboration with Public Works and Sheriff's Department. And you can see there that traffic-related accidents are one of the leading causes of death for children in our community. So that is something that we need to keep in mind with this, and I'll provide some tips a little bit later on. It's something that we do when we go out to work with schools. So this is really a partnership effort. It's, of course, many departments within the county that are working on this, already have mentioned a few of those, but it's also a partnership in the community. So with other local governments, like cities, with school districts, a number of school sites are partners in this effort. Of course, the Regional Planning Council helps to shepherd transportation funding in our community, and that does a lot to support Safe Roots to School efforts. And we, as Thurston County Public Health, have been involved in partnership with Thurston County Public Works in supporting some projects with North Thurston Public Schools, namely Lydia Hawk Elementary School and Olympic View Elementary School in recent years. And lately, we've been working on some South County school districts, namely Tenino Public Schools. So you can see some of the other partners there. I won't read them all off, but Safe Kids Thurston County is a big part of this effort as well. And of course, that's child injury prevention. And InterCity Transit is a major supporter and supplier of the services around Safe Roots to School, and they focus a lot of their efforts within their service area, which is most of the urban part of northern Thurston County, so Lacey, Olympia, and Tomwater. So I wanted to include some tips here about traffic safety. We try to weave this into whenever we're working with schools. This is a starting point for interesting families in this. Without safety, I don't think most people are gonna start to do more active transportation. So, and I won't read off all of these, because I know we're kind of pressed for time, but the key thing to remember about walking safely for kids and families is to try to make yourself really visible, to wear brightly colored clothing. Doesn't have to be a safety vest like this, it could be a very colorful tie, it could be reflective material that you've attached to your backpack, or put on your clothing. Popular thing is wristbands and things like that, or stickers for kids. So those things can really help to improve visibility, especially if they're reflective. And basic traffic safety when it comes to walking is stop when you come to a street crossing, look both ways, make sure you try to make eye contact with drivers, and when you know that it's safe to proceed across, walk across the street, don't run across the street. So just some basic things there that we try to encourage. For bicycling, it's kind of a lot of those same messages about being careful and scanning your surroundings, really paying attention to what's going on around you. But some added things for bicycling are that you should always wear a helmet, that you should ride in the direction of traffic if you're riding on a street. A lot of kids, if they're young, they're gonna be riding on a sidewalk anyway, so it's kind of be like a pedestrian, make yourself visible, and take care when crossing streets. And then for motorists, we want to try to point out that we want people to go slow. Slow down, pay attention to their surroundings, try to put away the distractions. Of course, we have state laws now regarding cellphone use in cars that is not allowed when you are driving, so hang those things up, put them away. Avoid those distractions that are gonna take your attention off of the road, and particularly those other users of the road, the vulnerable users in particular, people on bikes or walking on our streets. And so obeying other traffic laws is pretty important, but that slowdown in school zones, I think, is a key one. It's 20 miles per hour in our school zones, and that is to reduce the possibility of collisions and reduce their severity if there is a collision. So that's really, really important. I wanted to show you a couple of projects that we've been working on, because this effort is not only about educating, but it's also about providing the safe and supportive environments that help people be more active and be safer while they're doing that. So this connects to Thurston Thrives and the Community Design Action Team of Thurston Thrive, it's one of the key strategies in that. So we're trying to improve environments, particularly in those school zones, where it's gonna benefit the most kids going to school. And this set of images here shows some of the before-after. On the left is a Lydia Hawk project that was completed just at the start of 2018, with a new sidewalk that has made that walking route on the west side of Lydia Hawk a lot safer for kids and families. And on the right side of that slide is an image just recently of Olympic View Elementary, where we've been doing some sidewalk work, putting in some better crossing treatments and some traffic calming in that neighborhood to try to slow things down and make more safe spaces available, particularly on the walking route. And this next slide shows the whole project area for that Olympic View Elementary And this next slide shows the whole project area for that Olympic View Elementary School site. So, you can see it's fairly extensive. There's traffic calming going in throughout the Thompson Place neighborhood. The top of this image or map is Interstate 5, and at the bottom edge is Martin Way, so it's between those two major streets or highways, and then between Carpenter and Marvin, which is the general area where this is located. And a lot of the focus has been on that school walking route, as you saw in that previous slide, a better sidewalk there, improved crossings, better markings, and I'll show an image of that. Just about complete on this project, on the construction now, with striping indicating where parking is allowed, not allowed. That also narrows the visual field for drivers on this street, which is a fairly busy street. Parents were parking on the sidewalk a lot when they were dropping kids off at school. So, this is an effort to try to help get people to follow things a little better and make it a safer space for kids and families walking to school. And I think probably we're starting to see some good results from that. Principal Greer can probably attest to that. And we'll see what we can do as we proceed into this fall. Walk to School Day is coming up as an event that we do at the start of October. This year, it's on October 2nd. And we'll be encouraging kids and families at this school, at Olympic View, to participate this year, but we'll also be trying to bring this to some of the other schools that we work with, and continue that education and encouragement effort throughout the school year with these schools, as will Inter-City Transit with its Walk and Roll program. And we'll be looking for new opportunities as well. Safe Kids Thurston County has an opportunity to apply for another Safe School Zones grant, which would allow us to do some additional assessment with another school. We're looking at another site within North Thurston that has a high free and reduced lunch rate, so trying to benefit families and kids that are lower income in our community with some improved walking routes in that neighborhood. And we'll continue to collaborate regionally with a lot of these partners. So, that's my presentation, and I'd be happy to take your questions or let you ask questions of other partners.
Were those maps to be interactive?
What's that?
Were the maps, you said they were going to be interactive, but you cut it short? Is that what happened?
Oh, in terms of the presentation here?
Yeah.
Just had a little bit of, just the indication of where that school walking route is on.
Oh, I was expecting cars to come around the curve, so, okay, never mind then.
And then, of course, finished product. There's still some lighting to be installed along with this project. That's another key thing, is part of making ourselves visible is having good lights if we're riding a bike after dusk, but also having those streetlights in the right places at key intersections helps to help people stay safe.
Questions or comments?
Well, in sticking with my past comments of kids are 30% of our population, but 100% of our future, I want to compliment you for all the effort that you put into protecting kids. But at the same time, I want to scold the bureaucrats in government that oftentimes don't allow that to take place. And in this particular case, we've got a school, Nusqually Middle School, over at Stilicum and Pacific, Stilicum and Marvin. And we've got about $4 million that's been hanging fire there for about four years, where we've wanted to upgrade the intersection, put some crossings in, put sidewalks so the kids can safely get to and from, widen both streets, put turn lanes in. And yet, for the last four years, U.S. Fish and Wildlife has held us up over mitigation process in which they say the Mazama pocket gopher is more important than our kids' lives. So, any of you parents out there that have kids going to that particular school and would like to see an upgrade there, I wouldn't mind having you folks contact your congressman, your senator, because I can tell you U.S. Fish and Wildlife doesn't care, because it's already been four years. So, we're sitting on the money, we're waiting to do the project, but they think gophers are more important, and that's it for my soapbox.
Okay.
Time for my soapbox. How do we get a school like here that, with no sidewalk? I mean, how did that, how did we get to that point?
Well, there was a sidewalk at Olympic View. On the main street that goes to Olympic View, Horn Street, did have a sidewalk. It had a poorly designed curb edge that allowed for cars to pull up onto the sidewalk. So, what this project did was to install a vertical curb that would restrict the movement of vehicles, so they weren't parking, they hopefully will not be parking up on the sidewalk, and it'll be clearer where it's appropriate to park and not park. Of course, we'd like to see a lot less vehicles out there parking in the first place because of shifting kids either to the yellow, the school bus, which is another very safe way to get to and from school, or to walking or bicycling if kids are within that distance of the school.
And I would just ask people, please be very deliberative in building extra travel time during a school year, with weather conditions, the school zones, the buses and such. Be deliberate, build in more time so you're not racing and rushing around at the last minute.
Thanks, very good point.
Because tragically, tragically it'll happen, or could. So, thank you very much, Chris. I appreciate you condensing everything down.
You're very welcome. Good afternoon.
Next, we have an amendment to the Lewis County NFP Nurse Family Partnership Contract, and Liz Davis.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Liz Davis, Public Health and Social Services. I'll make this short and sweet. You're familiar with the Nurse Family Partnership Program, which provides partnership between a nurse and a young, at-risk mom from the time she's pregnant until the time of the child's second birthday. This is a program that we've offered in Thurston County for 15 years now, and we've also offered it in Lewis County since 2016. We have an interlocal agreement with Lewis County so that they give us funding so that we can provide those services in Lewis. This amendment simply extends that contract that we have with them until the end of 2020.
Okay. Questions?
Nope. Kids are coming first, you know. Good. Thanks, Liz.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Yes, there is.
Oh, is there a motion?
Sorry. Not my, used to that role. I move to approve and authorize the Director of Thurston County Public Health and Social Services to sign Amendment Number Two to the Lewis County Nurse Family Partnership Contract in the amount of $309,822.25.
Second.
They moved to seconded. Any further discussion?
Nope.
No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most curious. Thank you, Liz, very much. Item Number Seven on the agenda, Termination of the Lewis County Health Officer Agreement. And Shelley Slaughter will present.
Thank you, Commissioners. I have the unfortunate honor to ask you to vote to terminate the contract for Health Officer Services, as was entered between Thurston County and Lewis County last year on January 1st, 2018. It is currently scheduled to expire December 31st, 2019. And as you know, as our Health Officer, Dr. Wood, announced, she will be discontinuing her employment with Thurston County as of November 30th. Thurston County currently contracts with Lewis County to provide Health Officer Services for Lewis County one day, one day per week. Dr. Wood will be continuing to work with Lewis County via an independent contract with Lewis County, requiring us to terminate our Thurston County contract as of November 30th of 2019. And this is per RCW 70.05.150, which involves contracts for purchase of health services between local health departments. And we have provided proper legal contractual notice to Lewis County to, for our intent to terminate this contract. This action requires the Board of Health to make that decision.
Questions or comments?
Nope, I think we're on it. We went over this earlier.
Yep. Questions or comments?
Good.
I'm just glad Lewis County is not, there's no gap in coverage down there. Very good.
That's all I was concerned about. So, I would move to terminate the Lewis County Contract for Health Officer Services effective November 30th, 2019, and sign the termination of contract.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded, to terminate the Lewis County Health Officer Agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And motion carries. Now, we're moving to the Board of Health activities, if we've had any activities health-wise in the last few weeks, last month.
Clean water, biosolids, that's kind of it for my activity with the Health Department. Moving right along.
I work on the opioid task force in the Subcommittee on Criminal Justice, and as a BHO, I attended the first ILS interlocal leadership council, which I'll be turning over to Commissioner Hutchings, but I was able to attend the first meeting last month, which I think happens since our last Board of Health meeting.
And for me, biosolids and BHO. So, now we're moving over on to the Health Officers' Report.
Just wanted you to know that Stalwart work was, thank you. Stalwart work was done in August for providing immunizations through our Medical Reserve Corps. A total of 313 students were seen at two different clinics. 93 were screened out, and we, 222 students got 562 immunizations.
Wow.
And I'm very pleased to say that 73 of the students got an MMR, and 122 got T-DAP, and 83 got human papillomavirus vaccine, which prevents cancer.
HPV? HPV virus?
Yes, HPV. Thank you. HPV. So, that's it.
Is that it?
That's it.
Wow, that was.
Oh, wait. Very important. There's another clinic coming up on Saturday, September 21st, at Kaiser Olympia Medical Center, from 9 to 12. So, if you missed out on these, please come to that one.
And that's up on Marvin?
Lilly Road.
Oh, it's on Lilly?
It's Lilly, yeah. Thank you.
Oh, the old group health?
Yep.
Got it, okay. Anything, sir? Go ahead.
Just very quickly, I want to thank Dr. Wood for her service and hope you, I wish you the best as you move on with your new endeavors towards the end of the year.
Hey, thank you so much. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve here, and so, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything?
Nope.
Good. We're going to have a goodbye soiree.
Yeah, we'll have a little get together, but never hurts to tell somebody thanks for a good job.
And finally, the Directors' Report.
I'll just be very brief, so you can get to your next meeting. On behalf of our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Program, I just want to share that September is National Preparedness Month, and you did proclaim that at the Board of County Commissioners. But we at Thurston County Public Health are also highlighting personal health preparedness and encouraging people to prepare for disasters and be thinking of their health, including their personal needs, ensuring that they have provisions and supplies and equipment necessary to protect their family in case of an emergency, to be sure that they have adequate supplies of prescriptions and over-the-counter medications, paperwork, emergency action plans, immunization records, prepare for power outages, ensure they have adequate drinking water supplies and other skills necessary to help save lives. And we have more information on our Thurston County Public Health website for the public, as well as the Center for Disease Control website.
Beautiful.
And that is all I have.
Any questions or comments to the Director?
No, sir, thank you.
Anything? Anything for the good of the order?
Nope.
Nope. The September 10th, 2019 Board of Health meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Sir?